Public input on non-agenda items. Do we have any, Janice? I didn't see any.
All of the comments of the state grant our eminent powers.
That's an agenda. That's an agenda item.
That's on agenda, but none.
Okay, all right, good. So with that, there were a couple of people who were going to sign in. They haven't yet. Should I hold off on public hearings and go to a couple of other items?
One is waiting when you get to the hearing. I didn't know when he wanted to let them in.
Okay, all right. They're waiting, that's fine. We can start with that, but in fact, we should start with anybody who's waiting to be on now.
Yeah, I've got one waiting for the eminent domain, I believe.
I'd like them to hear the intro to public hearing procedure.
Okay, so I'll let her in.
Absolutely, absolutely. Him or her, I don't know which it is.
Karen Penoyer.
Okay. Okay, fine. We have a public hearing for two items, the Route 105 sidewalk eminent domain issue, and the second one being removing the no parking on Route 52 from the traffic code. As a precursor, just for any of you who are in the public listening or involved, I'd like to just remind everybody the purpose of a public hearing is for the Select Board to solicit input from the public on the matters at hand. We respect, we would expect everybody to be courteous and brief. We would allow all, anybody in the public who would like to address either of these issues to speak at that time. We will, after everybody in the public has spoken, we will, I will terminate the public hearing and revert to the Select Board. If, at that point in time, the Select Board will deliberate on the issue, and there'll be no more public input unless the Select Board member has a question of one of the people with, on the, from the public. So with that said, unless there are any questions, I'd like to start the public hearing with the public input for the Route 105 sidewalk eminent domain. And I believe we have one person or two, Karen Penoyer and Sharon Connor, it looks like. Either one of you would like to be the first to speak to this issue?
Yes, I would.
And this is, Karen, if you could just state your name for the record, please?
This is Karen Penoyer.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Karen Penoyer. I'm the owner of the Roundhouse at 225 Washington Street and the subject of the property you seek to take by eminent domain. Let's be clear, I'm not against a sidewalk. I'm not here because of the taking of the tiny triangle of my land. I'm not here because the town has tried for years to work with me and has exhausted all good faith attempts to negotiate a fair and equitable solution. I'm not here because I am unreasonable or difficult, as you may have been led to believe. I am here to protect my financial investment, my home. I am here because the town, through their powers of eminent domain, seek to take my driveway, and a public sidewalk outweighs my property rights as a tax-paying citizen. No mistake, we are here due to a gross lack of consideration for budgetary planning and a failure of the town to negotiate with me fairly and in good faith. My driveway is small, measuring approximately 24 feet long and 9 feet wide. However small, it provides just enough parking for a variety of vehicles and direct access to my home, a right we share as homeowners. The sidewalk proposal in relation to my property is poised to take ownership of my driveway through a sidewalk, public right-of-way, and easement. Efficient. It prevents most vehicles from parking on or near my property. It causes parked vehicles to partially block the sidewalk, putting vehicles at risk of being ticketed or towed, and forces pedestrians into speeding traffic. It restricts access to my home. The sidewalk engineer plans imply absolutely no consideration as to the devastating effects it would have on my property. From 2012 to 2020, I have consistently expressed my fears and concerns about the taking of my driveway. I've left phone messages that were ignored, asked questions that were unanswered, and had conversations that were dismissed. I often wonder, if I were Mr. Penoyer, would my concerns have been taken seriously? In 2019, it was apparent, after all these years, the town was growing anxious. They went door to door to seek signatures, including that of mine, from a neighboring elderly family member assumed to be my legal representative. I was left no other option than to, at my expense, obtain an attorney and an independent engineer to explore all viable options to make this work, something the town was unwilling to do. A reasonable option was to create an alternative parking area on the right side of my property, outside of the sidewalk and public right-ways and easements, something that should have been considered on the original plan. This solution was met with opposition from the town citing no money in the budget. Instead, the town offered to grant me a revocable agreement to provide me access to lower-level property by way of Shertail Point Park. This offer would prove to be of no value, as the town does not plow Shertail Point during winter, and there is no direct indoor access to my home from the lower level. The town also revised the plans to add 24 inches of parking to the front of the driveway. The town's offer of 24 inches would be its only and final offer. On August 11, the town emailed me a final offer accompanied by a notice of condemnation. The message was clear, signed or else. The Roundhouse, in addition to being my retirement home, is a vacation rental business which has contributed to Camden's economy for 12 years. If you take my driveway, you take my business. I ask all of you, when you go home tonight and you pull into your driveway, stop and imagine, if just for a moment, that vehicle no longer fits into the driveway that you no longer own, no other place to park, imagine what that would mean to you and your family. Finally, like the town's offer that lacks fairness and good faith, so too does the town's just compensation offer. The appraisal provokes many questions after its accuracy. For instance, my appraisal was initially addressed to another homeowner, transpose current value amounts, assess my land at a decreased value. Perhaps most egregious is that it concluded no impact to my property. I suspect that conclusion was geared more to prevent me from challenging my taxes. During the same month of town's appraisal, the tax assessor increased the just value of my property. My taxes increased by an unprecedented 26.2%. 26.2%. Just to put that into perspective, historically, increases would fluctuate between approximately 2 and 4%. I contacted the tax assessor. His reason for the unprecedented increase was, and I quote, "A spike in property values in your equity," end quote. Looking for a comprehensive explanation, I brought this to the town's attention. I received a written response saying that after review, they generally agreed with the new appraisal, and as what can only be described as an attempt to pacify me, offered me an additional $500. To this day, I have yet to receive a comprehensive explanation for their position. The Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution provides that no person should be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. So I ask, what is just compensation for a home that can't be assessed, a home that cannot be sold, and a business lost? According to the town, $1,650. In closing, there are others on Washington Street that will lose their property through the town's power of eminent domain. For those, my heart grow up to you. These are hard times that fall upon us. We fight for our lives against a rampant virus. Many have lost jobs, are at risk of eviction or foreclosure, are unable to provide for their families, and our children go to bed hungry. Now, more than ever, we call upon our elected officials to use their powers to help us, not abuse us. I respectfully ask you to return a vote of no to the taking of my property through eminent domain. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. And I think we have one other person, and I, the name I see on the, is Sharon Connor, but I don't think I'm looking at a Sharon. Would you please introduce yourself and address the board? Yeah, he's muted. Is he muted on our end or his end? You're muted. I can't do anything. Is he muted? I think he's muted on his end. There you go. There you go. There you go. Please introduce yourself and address the board, please.
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Mark Con.
Please, go ahead.
My name is Mark Connor.
Go ahead, Mark.
Living in the trailer, but I come one day and there's a hole in the middle of my lawn. I have no idea what you're going to do or when you're, or what you're going to take, my name. Not a sign of it.
Jeremy, do you have a clarification on what he's talking? I'm not sure what he's talking about.
I think he's confused. I think that...
Let's clarify this.
This is only, there are no other properties that we're considering for eminent domain other than 225 Washington Street.
Is that clear, Mark?
Yeah.
Is that your question?
There's a hole in the middle of my lawn.
I can speak to this. I'm not sure exactly on the specific property, but my, what my gut says is that his, what he's referring to is his lawn is actually in the existing right-of-way. And so oftentimes, people mow up to the street, right? That whole area is not technically their property. So that would be my guess on this. Like Audrey said, we're, this is not a hearing we're not taking by attempting to have a hearing for eminent domain on any property other than 225 Washington.
Thank you. Thank you. But some, let's...
And I can certainly meet with Mr. Connor if he'd like at some point.
Sure. Good idea. Do we have any other questions, Mark? Or I'll move on to the next person we have waiting in the queue. Okay.
I will do that.
All right, we'll do it. Thank you. I think we have one other. It looks like Mary Bishop, I believe, I'm seeing here, to speak to the issue. Mary, are you there? Mary? I don't see any video or anything. Hello? Yes, she is. Mary? Mary, there's no sound from your computer. Now she's muted. Janice, is she muted from our end to your end? Mary, can you hear us? Yeah, I know you can hear us, but is your volume turned up on your computer?
Her microphone may not be turned up.
I don't, I don't, her computer microphone must, your volume is either, is off on your computer.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the volume on.
Perhaps the microphone is off. I can't, we can't hear you, Mary. And she's muted again. This is part of the fun. But we're not muted, correct, Janice?
No, I think he's...
Yeah.
Do we have a phone number, like on hand, ready to go, that we can get her to call and take the process?
Sure, sure. Who should she call? Me?
You can call my number.
Okay, all right. One second, Mary. Let's see here.
Why don't we ask if that works?
Yeah. Mary, if you can hear me, listen, please. What we can do is have you call this phone number so we can make sure your hookup is correct. Are you ready to take a phone number? Okay, one minute. I got the one finger, I get that. I'm Italian, I'm good at hand signals.
Are you going to give her your number, Bob?
That's going to be yours.
Oh, I'll send it to her.
Oh. Anyway, just if, if, okay, it's area code 207, of course. Okay? Why don't you give her a quick call, and we can try to get you straightened away while we take a pause here.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
While we're waiting, there was a low rumble throughout this sound thing, and I'm hearing that. I don't know where it's coming from. Maybe coming from the conference room, I'm not sure. Are you hearing it?
No.
Anybody else hearing it?
No.
I hear it on Mark's.
Have you had your ears checked? It's still rumbling?
Yeah.
I...
Whatever he speaks, whatever. He's not from the earth, he's in your part of town.
Yeah, I think, Mark, when you speak, and I'm hearing a little rumble when you speak, but I don't hear anything on this end. I mean, right now, we don't hear anything.
I don't hear a rumble on Mark's.
No, I don't. I hear very clear. Is she calling?
They don't have this phone.
Looks like she's dialing.
She's what? Calling? I got a funny feeling she's on her computer. I was concerned this would happen.
Mine?
No, it's on Mary's computer. She must have something turned off. If she can't connect, we're going to have to move on. She's calling now.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Mary. Wait a minute.
Take it up.
I'm getting feedback when I talk to you. Now I can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear us now?
Oh, jeez.
I can just barely hear you through the phone.
I don't know what to do. If she can't get the computer...
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, Mary. Can everybody else hear, Mary?
Could you get closer to this microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Tell her to go ahead.
Go ahead, Mary.
Hi. We wanted to ask you some questions. I'm just hearing you because this is my daughter, Karen Penoyer, and I'm very much concerned what's going on.
Go ahead and explain over the phone. Mary, go ahead and explain over the phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Why don't you respond?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Just tell her to go ahead a little bit.
I am just concerned about this evidence of garbage that you're putting out against my daughter. She was right next door to me, and I just wanted to hear what might transpire.
Yes, well, she wants to know what's going to transpire.
Why doesn't somebody give her directions for how to watch on YouTube?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, yeah. Tell her to go onto YouTube and tell her how to get on that, so she can watch our discussion about what's going on. That'll be explained next.
I'm just watching, you know. I really don't have a comment, I'm just being totally concerned.
Okay.
Okay, Mary. Mary, do you know how to watch these meetings on either the cable channel or YouTube?
Well, I usually do Zoom or church or T40. I don't rely on having so much trouble now.
That's okay. If you're, if you're sort of interested in finding out how this is all going to work, we can take you off the phone now, and you can go back on Zoom, and you'll be able to hear and see everything.
Yes, yes, that's all. I really don't have too much of a comment. I just wanted to be here, thanks.
Sure, sure.
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Okay, bye-bye.
Perfect. With that, I don't believe anybody else that wanted to speak during the public process want to close the public discussion and revert to discussions with the Select Board and the town staff. I think it would be prudent to yourself, Audrey, or whoever you designate, to put, and Jeremy, whoever, to put what's real, what's the real issue at hand here, and what we're actually addressing, and what you're asking the Select Board to look at this evening.
Right, so I just want to be very clear. We've got two sort of parallel tracks going on. We've got the eminent domain issue, which we're discussing tonight, and which we need the board to make a decision on to move forward. And parallel to that, there's a negotiation going on with the landowner. And really, we can't mix these two things together tonight, because they're separate parallel tracks that are unfolding. And really, the moving forward with eminent domain, it's a timing issue, where, as everybody knows, you know, any eminent domain question needs to be resolved through town meeting. And in order to prepare for town meeting, it needs to be done months in advance, because we can't physically meet. It would be something that would have to happen by ballot voting. So in order to prepare for November, we need to start this process now. That doesn't preclude us from continuing negotiating with the property owner, which we are currently going through the process of doing. So I just want to be very clear that...
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you. This is Karen Penoyer.
Karen, 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 Karen.
I am unaware of any ongoing negotiations.
Karen, the, Karen...
I'm going to offer and a letter, excuse me, let me finish, and a letter of condemnation. I'm not aware of any ongoing negotiations. No one has told me it's in the process of negotiation.
Okay.
Do you have an answer to that?
Karen, I'd have to terminate your input at the moment, because the public portion of this is ended, unless we have a question. We can, we can address that question during this discussion, whoever, about the negotiation definition for your question you just asked.
So we have to follow a very strict process, because, just to give you some background on this project, as, as the Select Board knows, it's been a project that was originally funded in 2011, and one of the major sort of holdups that's taken us nine years to get to this point is that there was a lot of back and forth between the town and MDOT as to who was going to do the right-of-way work. I think it's switched who was going to be responsible for that at least four times. Finally, you know, I sort of got to the point where I thought, this project is never going to move forward unless we agree to do this work. I was, I was very clear with MDOT when we started it, that we do not have a property division like MDOT does, so following their very hefty right-of-way manual is a big ask for municipality. However, we've, you know, worked with them very closely to make sure that we're following their process. That being said, it's incredibly strict as to what we can do and what we can't do. It's all dictated by federal highway standards. So the negotiation that I'm talking about, and the process that we've had to go through with each and every property owner, where, you know, we needed to work out an easement, we have gone through, and we're continuing to go through that process with Mrs. Penoyer. All the other property owners, we've, we've worked out agreements with them when we needed to. So this is really just, you know, the final stages of the process where we can, you know, do both things at the same time.
Right. But to address Karen's question of not understanding negotiation, what I heard was, and I think, Bill, you had your hand up in a second, that Jeremy mentioned that a letter had been sent with some suggestions or negotiation, negotiation items in it? Is that, is that the town's first negotiation? Is that letter that came from the town, that's in, that's in our packet?
That is, that's part of the parallel process that we're talking about.
So negotiations are, that's considered, that's, that element's considered a negotiation, the track, the track?
Sorry, Bill, did, you have a comment, Bill?
I do. We have, as Audrey just mentioned, we're sort of stuck with some strict processes here, and that does not mean that two things can't continue, but you are going to have to make two findings tonight. The statute regarding eminent domain, which is what you're addressing tonight at this hearing, after you hear from members of the public and Ms. Penoyer wish to speak, as well as perhaps, in a minute, Jeremy Martin. The two issues are, one, do you find that it's necessary to take this property for the purposes of installing a sidewalk? The statute talks about that as a public exigency, but the case law just says, this means, is it necessary to take this for public purposes? So you'll have to make a motion after you hear all the evidence tonight as to whether or not you find it necessary. And I'm sure the evidence will describe the amount of energy and effort that's taken place in terms of the engineering, the planning, the discussions with other property owners, so you have the full picture. And I'm sure Jeremy can give you an update on that in a moment, because he's been partnering in that. The second issue that you're going to have to address by statute, and you don't have to, but I believe you should, because the statute talks about it with the word "or", so you can find that there's a public necessity, which I just described, a need to have this sidewalk for public purposes. And you can also make a finding that purchase, that the municipality has been unable to purchase it, that what has been deemed a reasonable value, and Jeremy can describe that perhaps in a manner I can later on. That does not mean, as Audrey just said, that there won't be further discussions after this meeting, but for the purposes of this meeting, we want to make it clear that offers have been made, and we could not come to terms, the town could not come to terms with Ms. Penoyer. She has her perspective, as she's stated clearly, and I'm sure Jeremy will describe the eminent of the town's perspective. There isn't, there was, in fact, a letter that was issued after months of discussion to try to summarize where the town was, and that's been referred to as the final offer. And that is true. And it's got the purpose of setting the understanding for this meeting, that the town's been unable to go and purchase this, these rights through the negotiation process. Again, it does not mean that it will be further discussions, but those findings are important so that you can move forward if you do make those findings to the town meeting. And as Audrey said, unfortunately, we're, we're in an unusual circumstance where we have to make these decisions, and you have to make these decisions well in advance in the number 30, because of the restrictions we have, we're not having special town meetings in person. So those are the two findings you have to make, and I would suggest that Jeremy address both the process that the town's gone through with discussions and negotiations, and ended those negotiations by letter.
Okay. Okay.
As well as the necessity. I have one more thing, just in terms of answering or addressing Ms. Penoyer's question a minute ago about who's discussed anything lately. I, in fact, did have a discussion with her attorney yesterday in person to discuss whether or not we could move forward. And I will attempt, and I'm sure Jeremy will as well, to see if we can continue on that path. But we have to have a sort of finite end to that process for the purpose of identifying to the voters that there was a date for which the offer was made. It was the end of the timeframe. I believe that was the 14th. Jeremy, can you correct me if I've got that date incorrect by letter? And whether that sounds direct for owners, there has to be an endpoint for the purpose of moving forward to the vote by the public, yes or no on eminent domain. So that might help inform the board as to what it needs to hear next. And I believe that should be information from Jeremy.
Right. Jeremy, as you go into this discussion, I would also suggest for the benefit of the board that just reference the, what piece we're actually talking about for eminent domain here. Because as I'm reading the drawing, I believe I know what the piece is. But I want to make sure, because I heard a comment about taking, allegedly taking an entire driveway. And that is not my understanding. So Jeremy, include that in your description of what's going on here, please.
Sure. So maybe I'll just go back to, I think, the beginning of this project. Audrey explained how long, you know, how long this has been in the works. I came into town about two years and walked into this project that was in the works. And, you know, the pathways committee was involved in this. They, you know, in trying to bring a pedestrian, safe pedestrian access to Shertail Point. You know, if you go out Washington Street, there's a sidewalk all the way until you get to Matthew John. And from there, there were no sidewalks off of Shertail Point. And it was clear to me, just based on everything that's been transpired, you know, this project's been in the works for a long time, that, you know, the town really believes this is a significant public need to provide safe pedestrian access. You know, we do hear about speeding happening on Washington Street. You know, I drive regularly. I think everyone drives regularly. And we see people walking in the street or on the edge of the street. This project, again, is a DOT in a town project. And so when I, you know, came into this, the project was designed, for the most part, already. Again, Garland Dorsey's been working on this for many years. And I've met with the property owners, engineer, met with the property owners for a number of years before I even got here. And I can't really speak to the history to that point, the timeframe, and how those plans were provided to property owners that were impacted. But when I got here, you know, this project was moving along. And we had four properties at that stretch from Mount Batty, where Mount Batty comes up, circles up back up to Washington Street, to Shertail Point, that are, you know, we needed to work out some sort of agreements for this public benefit, which is this pedestrian sidewalk. And we, you know, myself and Andrew Hebert, the engineer from Garland Dorsey, having met with the property owners, Ms. Penoyer, who does not live here, so it was hard for us to meet in person with her. We met with every property owner that was impacted multiple times to describe the project, what we were taking. Just so everyone knows, there are takings for actual property right-of-way. And then there are construction easements and the like that also play out here. And, you know, and if a tree gets chopped down or taken through a construction easement, people get, there's value to those things and those are reflected in an appraisal. So as part of this project, we have to, as Audrey was saying, we've got to comply with DOT's regulations and requirements. This is a DOT, a federal highway project with funds. So what we have to do is, based on the plans that were designed, and again, those plans were years in the making. And I appreciate Ms. Penoyer when she says that, you know, there were discussions or comments about things should be a little different than she was, that showed up on the plan. But, you know, the town, we were moving forward on the project. And part of the process is, is we need to hire an appraiser. We're not hiring an assessor, we're hiring an appraiser. And that appraiser has to be a certified appraiser and have worked within the DOT regulations and requirements. We did that. And that appraiser developed his appraisal based on standard appraisal practices. And then the DOT requirements also require a peer review appraiser. And so a third-party appraiser, who's not affiliated with that initial appraiser, is required by DOT regulations to review the appraisal. And that happened in this case. And so as that project, you know, the plan was presented with Ms. Penoyer on what we were going to need to make this project work. And I think it was about 119, originally about 119 square feet of land area that was actually being taken. So when Ms. Penoyer talks about, I will say Ms. Penoyer's driveway, or let's, it's hard to call it a driveway because it's really an immediate turnoff off of the street right to her front. For the most part, there's a landscape area and then you walk down to a deck area. But there's not a driveway, as most people think of a driveway, where you drive up. That is not the case here. It is pretty much a, you know, an area where someone can park off the side of the road, perpendicular to the road, not like a parallel park, perpendicular to the road. What she has now is, if she does park a large truck or vehicle on the property, that vehicle is already hanging out into the right, into the existing right. So as we were moving forward with this project, we understood that Ms. Penoyer has an issue with parking there. We worked very hard to try to come up with what we thought was an equitable solution. We proposed a couple of operations that she had reviewed. She provided some comments back. We had then proposed actually moving, she's got a fence there. We actually proposed moving that inward towards the house and thereby extending the driveway about four feet, as I recall. Initially, we're going to go two feet and then we went up even more, four feet. And we were doing a lot of work. And this was outside of that scope, the original scope of what we had proposed. And this was to accommodate her parking situation. And in responding to one of her requests or one of her, you know, counteroffers, I did, you know, talk about, mention a, to work with her. And, you know, we can also, we said that I was never intending to, to say we would remove a parking area up front. I was just trying to provide her some legal access to Shertail Point because she clearly has a driveway or an access area to the rear property. And that is on this town property. And to our knowledge, during, I know Bill's done some deep work on it. I don't think there's any legal right there. So we were trying to, I was trying to work with her and try to give her another legal access that would obviously have to be agreed by the owner then, because that's how licensed agreement works in the town. And we continue to work back and forth. And then COVID happened in March and I, you know, I was really confident that we were getting to a place that we could get this project moving. And all the other parties agreed, the three other parties that were impacted. But Ms. Penoyer was coming back with some desires, you know, changes. We tried to keep accommodated and we did our best. And, you know, and again, in line with the needs to get things onto a ballot in November, you know, we have to follow these processes that Bill and Audrey said. It's our hope that we can continue to work with Ms. Penoyer. The idea of moving the driveway over, and I don't know if we should be going in all this detail here, but that's a significant expense and a significant change to the project. And, you know, the engineers, it just doesn't necessarily work. There's a lot of gray issues as well in that area and access to her home. We responded and said, you know, this is really kind of our final offer. And I didn't, I didn't get a response back to that offer.
Okay. Jeremy, is it, Jeremy?
Continue to work with Ms. Penoyer to see if we can come to some sort of resolution.
Okay. So the negotiations are continuing, as I've heard from you. And this eminent domain piece, as I look at the drawing, is about a six-by-20 piece of land, six feet by 20 feet, as I look at the drawing.
No, I think it's more like three feet by 60 feet or something along those lines.
Okay, all right, okay, thanks. Bill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just, I think it might be helpful because the board is going to have to address whether or not the town was able to purchase the property at reasonable value. Jeremy, could you be more specific in terms of two things? The letter, the final offer letter, two things. When did it expire? And the second thing is, could you just describe the additional offer that was in that letter? So the board has a sense of what additional value was put before Ms. Penoyer.
I'm sure. I don't have that letter right in front of me, Bill. But yes, we, what we had proposed. Well, can you ask your first question really quick again? Do you have that on?
Sure. When did the offer expire? And I think I misspoke. I think it was the 17th, which would have been yesterday. Is that correct?
We gave her until the end of today to respond to our offer, is what we were saying.
Okay. And that response was not forthcoming?
And I did not get a response to that, correct?
Okay. And then the second issue was, as the condemnation order, the draft condemnation order before the Select Board indicates, the current offer is $2,150.
A component?
The component parts of that are, the value was determined by the independent appraiser of $1,650, right?
Correct.
And of course, as you said, that was reviewed by an independent peer review appraiser. And then the second component of the $2,150 is an additional $500 that the town has offered over and above what the appraiser had offered as a result of further discussions with the town assessor to give the best benefit property value or assessment that we could, based on the expert advice we have. Is that accurate?
Correct. Correct. In addition to that, there is some benefit, some additional cost that the town is adding in this final offer. And that is extending the driveway, moving the fence, as she had requested. And it's, again, extending the driveway a number of feet closer to her home. And that was, I think, estimated in that letter about $3,000, as I recall, the additional benefit that the town would be spending to do that additional work on her property to facilitate that.
And just so it's clear to the board, that wasn't necessarily just your idea in terms of this driveway extension and the additional $3,000 of expense that was offered in that settlement letter. That was as a result of discussions with Ms. Penoyer over time.
That is correct.
The, her current demand might be different, but you didn't make that up yourself. That was something she requested at some point. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. And this is, you know, we were working on this for many, many, many months, many conversations and discussions over this.
Right, right. All right. We probably should take a pause here and ask the Select Board members if they have questions in this regard of where we, what process we're in at this point or the matter at hand. Are there any questions from the board members? Mark? You're muted, Mark. There you go.
Let me clarify a couple of things. And I'm unsure if there was a report in the newspaper last week that has some figures that are a little different than what I just heard. Jeremy, you mentioned a $2,150 settlement just now. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, about $1,650 plus the $500 additional that we, the $1,650 came from the qualified appraiser. Five hundred, additional to that.
I didn't know if the $2,150 included it. I thought it was. Okay, in the newspaper, she states that, ooh, whoever turns something off. My son just got that. That's great. Now it's back again.
Uh-oh.
Correct. In the newspaper, it stated, she stated that, she argued that, under the town's assessment, she should be offered $3,189 for the land payment instead of $650. And then she was ordered $2,150 over. So the difference between those two figures, hold on a second. I've been doing some math here. $3,189 minus $2,150. So we're talking about a little more than $1,000 difference right now. Is, that would be correct from what she states in the paper she would like to have. And so I'd like to ask Ms. Penoyer, if-
Wait a minute, Jeremy, do you have a response? Jeremy, do you have a response to that before we go off asking questions? Again, the negotiation-
Sure, I'll have a response. And then I think Bill may want to say something too. A qualified appraiser.
I understand.
And what I'm saying, Mark, I think what I'm trying to get at is, is that appraisals and assessments are different things. We have to go, we have to use the state regulations, requirements, and rules when we do, when the state or a municipality under a local administrative project does. We have to use their requirements. We use their rules to do this. And so in this case, an appraiser, not a town assessor, an appraiser did this.
Right, right. Jeremy, I understand what you're saying. I understand the difference. My question, what I'm getting to a point is here. It seems to be maybe a $1,000 difference in what we're dealing with here. I'm not a big fan of eminent domain. I've driven by the property, driven by all the properties just the other day just to look at it. I was not aware, not in the newspaper, that they offered $3,000 worth of the fence back, which I took note of where it was and that would be in addition to her property. Also, noting where the property is, having a sidewalk finished going to the park seemed to be an added value to the house, which is interesting. So I think it's unfortunate. We're so close. And we've offered quite well. But yeah, on the other hand, eminent domain is unpopular. It's nice hearing, I'm asking questions because I want to make sure all the signs, not just what's in the newspaper, is clarified. Basically, we offered $2,150 plus $3,000 worth of helpful property, which should help it even now for what's on the sidewalk. That's correct?
I, Jeremy, if you have an answer, I just questioned Bill. If we start moving into discussion about an ongoing parallel track called negotiation versus the track that's eminent domain, they're usually two separate tracks and trying to obviously solve by negotiation and a deal. But I'm a little concerned with your opinion on discussing a negotiation at a Select Board meeting.
Yes, and thanks. And I appreciate Mark's comment in the sense of trying to sort of get to brass tacks. But unfortunately, we can't do that in this forum, nor do we know what was said in the newspaper. Frankly, if it is accurate or not, we have no knowledge, meaning Jeremy and I and Audrey, to my knowledge, have not heard anything like you just said, Mark. So we have to rely on what we hear from the actual source, as well as the fact that she's been represented by an attorney. And I've had no communication like that whatsoever. So I appreciate the idea, but Bob was correct. We have to address the two issues. Have we been unable, to this date, to purchase it at a reasonable price? And secondly, is it necessary to have a sidewalk as a public convenience?
Right, thank you. Thanks, Mark. I get your point clearly. But other Select Board members, Taylor, Allison, where did, I don't know where my, oh, is Jenna still there? Yep. You have any questions? Allison, do you have your hand up? Yep.
I am so excited about this project in general. I've heard people asking about it for years. It's felt very depressing. It's always been very confusing to me why we made no progress after getting this really exciting grant. This is helpful in understanding why, you know, why progress just doesn't happen, why new sidewalks don't get created, why so many things that seem obvious to everyone that we should do just, you know, end up not happening. we should do just, you know, end up not happening. I'm trying to figure out how important it is that I understand every detail of this, and it's obviously really important to me that we go about this fairly. It's not something the town does often, so I think it, you know, it certainly makes us all a little bit uncomfortable, and it makes, you know, I'll speak for myself, it makes me a little bit uncomfortable, and that's probably the way it's supposed to be. But, you know, I guess maybe it's a sort of a question for Bill in the sense of, what do, are we in a position right now where, is it very important that I come to the conclusion that we are offering a fair price? Is it, you know, how do we factor in the fact that there are ongoing negotiations? I guess I'd like a little bit of clarity of what, I have seen all of these offer letters that have happened, I see what's in our packets, and I've gone on, you know, I've driven by there, I've gone on Google Earth and looked at imagery, you know, I can kind of see, okay, it would be frustrating to have that much of your driveway taken. I think a lot of this comes down to the fact that most of us forget how much of our own, you know, what we think of as our property is actually not our property. Like, you know, I went to rape fines on Canuck Street in the town right away. I did that knowing I was taking a risk, and I sort of only knew that because of my involvement in municipal government, it's not like the real estate agent said, you know, just so you know, when you buy this property, it's really the town owns half your yard. So that always comes as a shock to people, or oftentimes comes as a shock to people, but that here, in this case, we're going a little bit further by saying, you know, we actually, the community does need a little bit more than that. So I think that, like, the indignation is probably two things, it's coming in terms of the fact that you never owned what's that you own, and then a little bit more, so.
Okay.
I guess, anyway, I'm kind of droning on and on, but I'd like just to know what, what are the central things that we must have clear tonight in order to be able to make a decision, and where might it be okay that we're, you know, still a little...
Okay, I'll try to summarize somewhat succinctly. So one thing you've heard is from Jeremy and Audra, a professional was hired to do the valuation. I can tell you that the valuations of other properties were of similar amounts. These are minimal numbers in terms of what the professional appraiser determined to be the value. To put it in context, this is a 3.7-foot triangle at its base. The base, if you think about where it is, is at the corner of the Shertail property and the road, and Ms. Penoyer's compound will be line right there, so there's 3.7 feet there. It then runs to be a very long skinny triangle, 65 feet to a point, and then comes back again. So that is the context of exactly what's being taken. Along with the right to be able to put the sidewalk in, which of course requires that the town have access onto our property, and that's about an 800 square foot piece, but then they can put the excavators and other things in there to make sure that the base material and the organics are removed and the drainage is right, and all of that is done. That was appraised as well, the temporary rights are also appraised, that's part of the $1,650. But you've heard that, it's not a sort of a complex property we're taking there, it's a very skinny sliver. The second thing is, keep in mind that the right of way, Washington Street right of way, has been paid for once. It's a public right of way, and they are obtained by having the town pay money once upon time to create these rights. And it's true, just like you described, that certain people, many people, have improvements in the right of way, but they have those improvements subject to the town's need to use the right of way, that happens all the time. And that's just the nature of the beast, and good for you, you get to use it for a while, but, you know, the width of the driveway here, of the piece that's being taken in front of the actual driveway, it's really a parking space driveway, is, at the point where we're talking about, is maybe a foot in terms of additional space, in terms of width. So that's why it might seem to you as you hear Ms. Penoyer's explanation, and you hear the appraisal amount of $1,650, why is the appraisal so low? It's because it's such a minor change to the value of the property burdened by the easement, the additional easement we're seeking to take, versus the value of the property in its current condition. So what you're being told, or what the appraiser tells us, is he values the property before these additional three-foot by 65-foot pieces taken, and then he values the property after that is presumably taken. And what he's saying is it has almost no impact, it has a $1,650 impact on value. So that's the context of it, in terms of trying to understand, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really central part of it to remember, is that all of us who, many of us are kind of camping out in the town's right of way.
Right.
You've been able to, you know, I've been able to get away with it so far, basically. I've got these rape fines, and I thought it's, it's a risk, and that we're, it's, we really should be thinking about it as because of privilege, all this time of being a community property, and now the community needs it back. Really, the additional part of it is really very small.
Right. Any questions, Taylor or Jenna? Taylor, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple questions on clarification, and then a little on. So I guess just sort of for Bill and/or Jeremy, to be clear on the process, make sure I'm understanding you're right. The process is that we'll be asked tonight to decide whether to put to ballot in November the question of whether this property, this property could be taken by eminent domain, and how it will be left up to voters to decide on the lien amount, is that correct?
No.
Yes, this has to be approved at a town meeting.
Okay. And then also, and because of timing, we need to do that tonight so that it would make that ballot, but the hope is, from my understanding, and following correctly, that the town's position is, we can still resolve this by negotiation, and then that may never actually end up on the ballot.
That is true, but there's also an endpoint, and we have reached the endpoint in terms of sort of a final offer, because we have to reach that point in order to move forward.
Right.
We can't have a discussion, but you might, it might sound like I'm asking you, Audra and Jeremy and I are asking you to be schizophrenic, but we're not, we're just saying it's time to move forward, and you find as of tonight, the towns were not able to purchase it at a reasonable cost.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me, I just want to make sure that it's abundantly clear.
Sure.
I think our questions are good. I seem pretty clear on the numbers, you know, it does seem like we're not far apart, you know. In terms of the public need, just from my perspective, and I think, you know, having our finger on the pulse of what we hear in the community a lot, is that pedestrian access and pedestrian safety all over town is consistently and very loudly popular, as a need along from a lot of, I would say, a vast majority of the citizens. So I do feel like that that is something that is worthy of a discussion at this level. Of course, nobody wants to be discussing eminent, you know, property rights are as important as it gets, and I didn't understand anybody's frustration for even having to have this discussion about their property they've given money for. That being said, I think I look at this issue as one of what is reasonable and what's facts.
Right.
So, you know, taking that into consideration, I'm looking at what the offer that may be based on the appraiser and the third-party peer review appraiser, and the additional benefit, if you include that, is above and beyond what an actual valuation is for that piece of property.
Okay.
So that's what I have for now.
All right, thanks, Taylor. So Bills, I understand that the first item we had, that I heard you earlier, about an hour ago, was to decide whether the select board agrees that it is important to the town that this land be, well, acquired, or whatever term you use, is that correct? That's the first question?
Yeah, there might be a motion to say I move that public exigency requires the immediate taking of this parcel, as described in the condemnation order, that would be motion number one.
Okay. Do I hear a motion from the select board?
I'll make the motion that the property is essential to the platform, basically what you're saying, correct, Bill?
Yeah, it's, the statute says that the municipal officers must determine that public exigency requires the taking of the property interest, and that equates in to the case law of meaning. You find that it's necessary for public purposes to put the sidewalk, that would be the most...
Right, right. Do you agree with that, Mark?
I'll make it, yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Roll call, vote, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
I did want to discuss something, yes.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted just a couple things to clarify why I made the motion. I came into this not thinking I would support it, but I was not aware of, I was only aware of what's in the press, and that's why I wanted to ask questions.
Sure.
Because it's not really clear, I mean, how small the amount, how small the amount of property we're taking is, and how much further we went to, especially the $3,000 to rework the fencing, because I've driven by the property and seen that, and that made a big difference, and I understand it better than that, so thank you for that.
Go ahead, Mark.
Excuse me, this is Karen Moore, if I may, just ask for a clarification.
Why is it...
Maybe perhaps Jeremy, you would be best suited to answer this question if you would kindly.
We have to hold this, hold this conversation, please. We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Allison was aye, Mark? Mark?
Aye, I said aye.
I'm sorry, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna? Jenna?
Your name is Jenna.
You almost, you almost did it, Jenna. Jenna?
I'm sorry, keep communicating, keep reading me, and I'm just muting myself, I feel badly making this vote, however, I do have to vote aye.
Right, and Bob, aye also, five zero. The second motion or action, Bill?
Second motion would be to find that the town has been unable to purchase these easement rights at what you, as the officers, deem to be a reasonable value.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Not hearing any roll call, vote, Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
I'm trans, and because of eminent domain, and I don't think that the process is as fair as it could be, I know it's the process, it's the law, we follow what we do, I don't think it's as, as fair as it possibly could be, but I would vote aye.
Thank you. Mark, Taylor?
Aye.
Bob, aye also, five zero. Thank you very much, thank you all, and it was a very difficult issue, it's very complex. I just went through one of these on my own property on Route One with MDOT, and it's, it's what it is. Onto the second item on the public hearing, which is, let me get back to my agenda because I lost it.
May I ask a quick...
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
That, one of the things I think I heard earlier is that because this is a state road and a state project, or maybe I don't remember exactly the reason, but that there is a really specific process that we have to follow.
Yes.
And it doesn't give us the latitude that we might like in terms of saying, oh, well, you know, we really feel like we should be able to rent a garden and here for a new beach house, or a, like, you know, it doesn't allow us to deplete from...
Right.
...the law in terms of just compensation.
That's correct. Yeah, good question, Allison, because sixty-six homes just went, property owners just went through this on Route One with MDOT, and every one of them wound up having to go through that process, which...
Well, I address...
Somebody stop this, now, hold on, Karen, how is this happening?
Yeah, she shouldn't...
Who is, who is turning, but the public comment's over, you know, Allison keeps getting back, can't we control who's speaking as host?
Yeah, she, yeah.
All right, please, anyway.
One more question, Bob?
Mark, yep.
Just to clarify, from now, we will go to a town meeting before it goes to the vote in November, is that sort of another step, am I clear on that?
What? The town, the warrant, no, no, Mark, the town meeting is the ballot.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. Onto item number two, which on the public hearings, and again, the public hearing, I don't believe we had anybody was, wanted to speak to this one, is that correct? That said, it'll close the public hearing portion of the discussion on the, from moving no parking on Route 52 from the traffic code. Audra, or Randy, whoever wants to lead this discussion?
Yes, so this is just sort of the final piece to the discussion that we started back, I believe it was in June, late June, about the no parking that is along Route 52 going from the Lincolnville Town Line to around the Barrett's Cove Boat Launch. So there's a lot of no parking there, and as everybody knows, the Ledges is a very popular swimming area, and there are a few places there where it is possible to park, and so the first kind of step in the process of identifying those areas where it's appropriate for parking is to just remove that area as no parking from the traffic code, and the further steps that we need to take are identifying those spaces, marking them, and also putting up signage to alert both motorists as well as pedestrians who are crossing from the parking spaces to the lake to look out for one another.
Okay. Randy, do you want to add anything to Audra's discussion?
No, I think I said correct.
Okay, all right, so, okay, let's revert to select board discussion on this matter. Anybody want to be the first in on this one? Not here. I guess one of my questions is, when we're revising this no, elimination of no parking, are there any stated restrictions on where the parking, I mean, there were parts of that road where you, you can't park, I mean, that's just physically, you can't do it, but is there clarification, will there be clarification on the no parking, where it's, where, or where the parking's allowed, and what restrictions that might be? For example, no...
Before removing it, there's not going to be any restrictions.
But can it, can it be, is there an alternative to completely removing it? Is my question.
Completely removing it from the traffic code? We would have to get very, very specific, I mean, there's already a section in there, and Randy and I have both talked about it, and it's incorrect, where it says there, it's no parking all along Route 52 from the Lincolnville Town Line to, where, you know, except for, I think it's like a, is it a mile and a half, a mile and a half or a mile and a quarter from the Town Line, something like that, but if you measure it out, it's way too far away, so it's clearly incorrect. Was it a mile and a half, Randy, that it's stated in the code?
I think what happened was it was supposed to be a quarter mile, and it got put in as one and a quarter miles.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, there, it does get that specific, but I just think that for the sake of this, just remove it altogether, and then we can go through the exercise of delineating where it is safe, and...
Oh, that's, that was my point, because to my, my mind, I keep thinking about, as I drive by that area, there are a number of spots where you can pull over a car when you're over the fog line, the white line, and that's much safer than being a foot or two into the roadway kind of a thing, so, but if there's the ability to do what you just said... kind of a thing, so, but if there's the ability to do what you just said, that makes sense. Mark?
Good question, just to clarify, the places where we're removing the signs, is it safe to park for people to park out of the redway traffic, is that correct?
No, what I'm saying is that you're removing that whole stretch from the traffic code as no parking, so we can't guarantee that, you know, people might, they might choose to park in an area where it's unsafe, we can't, unless we want to go through and be very specific, we can't
I see.
We can't pick and choose.
So, bottom line is, go ahead, Mark.
I thought in our last, I thought in our last meeting, we discussed talking to DOT, DOT about where we can
Right, but that's different than what we're doing now, which is just strictly what's in our park, what's in our traffic code. So there's two things going on, we're just removing it from the traffic code, and then we're going to go back and find those areas where there is room to park, delineate those as parking, and put up signage.
No, but if a person parks someplace where they're not supposed to, is, do we lose the ability to enforce it?
Yes.
Yes. Taylor, one second, Allison, Taylor?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So if we remove the no parking, but someone still parks with their vehicle on the fog line in the roadway, is that still a violation that's enforceable, Randy?
They have to have ten, you have to have ten clear feet of passage to go around the vehicle, and you also have to have 300 feet of visibility. What might happen is if there's an accident that's happened, the person that's parked in the road may take some liability. That's the litigator's duty.
Okay, thanks. So I guess my question is, this is, this is the end of the one, the board, or is this?
No.
No.
No, this isn't the power of the Select Board to decide.
But I guess my concern is, at our last meeting, when we discussed it, I felt very comfortable with the concept based on sort of what we discussed with Audra, and the way that Audra, you laid it out, talked with DOT, and signage and safety, and it felt like a very smart way to go forward. My only concern is, we make this decision tonight, it becomes legal tomorrow, what do we do between now and when we have appropriate signage, take some appropriate steps? Just, I just want to make sure that there's, we don't just have a free throw between now and figuring it out.
Well, I suppose we could always put some kind of a date of this takes effect, it doesn't have to be tomorrow. We could always say, I mean, just making a point, we could always say December 31st, 2020. We could do something like that, but
Yeah, I mean, that would make me feel a little better, because I do, like, I like the idea, and I really like the way that the plan seemed to be laid out at the end of June. I would be more comfortable with if we did, perhaps this takes effect in the off-season, when there's snowbanks there, and no one's going to park there anyway, gives us time to basically figure the seasons off, though, so figure it out before next time.
Yep, yep. Allison, you're next.
I understand, like, the concern that Taylor's bringing up, and the, you know, the safety issues of somebody, you know, large numbers of people hypothetically parking, you know, right in the middle of Route 52, but I think it's also important to keep in mind that this is a state road, first of all, and that this is similar to many other places that we have in Camden and Rockport, many other roads that go unaddressed in our parking ordinance. So, the fact that we took the step, or the, found people at some point, took the step to kind of get involved in exactly where people could park or not park on this road, however many years ago, was kind of a very high level of micromanagement that is quite typical of the town of Camden historically, especially if you read the traffic ordinance, it's very, very hard to follow, but I think we shouldn't be so fearful of just putting things back to the way that would normally be the case. I mean, you looked at, okay, all near car, you know, and you drive along there, that's I'm aware that most of that is Rockport, but yes, sometimes people will park more over the fog line than some people would like, but it's, the conditions tend to mostly regulate people's behavior, because most people don't want their car to get hit anyway, and so there's some self-regulation that happens. I don't think that we've mapped out every single place in Camden, like along Route 1 to Lincolnville, where you could potentially pull over your car.
Mm-hmm.
Happily, I don't
No, I don't think so.
I mean, sometimes, I think what's more typical is for these major state roads to go, or places outside of the downtown, to just go unaddressed in parking.
Right.
And if somebody could definitely tell me, if I'm wrong here, but, and it was a lot of luck for weather, maybe it was because nobody really even knew who put up all these signs, that maybe it was the state, maybe the state is going to, you know, sometimes the state actually takes issue with people parking in places on state roads, so they intervene, and so the thought was, we could take it out of our ordinance and work with the state to figure out, they're going to be made aware of the fact that we are taking it out, this out of our ordinance, if they deem it necessary to take action, they can do that. And so I guess I would strongly encourage us to
Right.
move forward right away, taking it out of our ordinance, and then doing what, exactly what we said, which is working with the state officials and Dave St. Laurent, and I mean, whereas Audra, you know, has
Right, 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 yeah.
I'm really comfortable with the plan that Audra
Right. Right, so just to be clear, from my perspective, as I'm hearing, if we pull this thing right out tonight, great, and we could put, we could put a date certain on it if we want to, that's another thing, because we are at end of season here, so I think there's a little bit of time to play, but the next steps would be to meet with MDOT to talk about their, their input in terms of
Well, I would say that we go out, we determine the areas where we think there's enough space to park.
Okay.
Then we go back to, you know, we go back to MDOT, say we've identified these areas as there's enough space.
Right.
We would like to put parking here, we'd like to put signage here, and because we, you know, the municipality has the ability to regulate parking.
Right.
It's really more of a, just an agreement
Sure.
that, as opposed to getting their permission.
And that's probably going to take X months to do, knowing how these things usually go, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's going to take a little bit of time, just because of, you know, priorities and what other things that we need to do.
With Taylor's point, I think that, yeah, if you, we took it away now, and, you know, who knows what happens tomorrow, we, why not put a date certain on the, on the
I mean, I guess you could, but I guess it's, you know, what's, it's, what's your level of risk? One, that something's going to happen, and
It's limited, it's limited.
Right, so I mean, I think that's what you, as a board, need to decide, is it, is there a high risk, and
Yeah, given the time of year, probably not, because to my point, it's the end of season, and so I think that's a good point. Randy, do you want anything before, oh, I'm sorry, Allison, you have your hand up.
I mean, currently, we are telling people it's illegal to pull over in one of those turnouts and take a picture of Maganacor Lake. Like, let's just keep this in perspective. I mean, and for those of us, there are people out there who are comfortable breaking rules that seem a little bit ridiculous, and so they're just doing this, and there are other people who are like extreme rule followers and feel this like major tension every time. When I pull over there right now to take a picture of the lake, my kids are like, Mom, it says no parking, you're breaking the law. It's this really uncomfortable thing, I'm like, I don't think that's what this
Right.
applied to, because we're, this is the thing what we're doing, and I know it's a
All right.
I would, I would say that, given where we are, I'd say the risk to you all and to the town and to pedestrians or motorists is very low.
Especially given the time of year, we're going to get to it, so, do I have a motion from the board?
I would move that we remove parking restrictions on this, after when you say this section of Route 52, or are we removing all parking restrictions on, I guess, what was the motion supposed to be?
On Route 52 from the traffic code, period.
Is that accurate, Randy, or am I inadvertently taking something away from Lower Mountain Street that needs to be in there?
I would, your motion probably should be remove no parking, vote here, vote also.
To where? Go ahead, Allison, thanks, Allison.
Vote here for second.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thanks, Jenna. Discussion? Roll call vote, Taylor?
Oh, Taylor.
Oh, Taylor, I'm sorry, sorry, Taylor.
Yeah, just, I realize that Audra, you're saying the risk to pedestrians is very low. I'm curious how we're arriving at that, at that analysis, other than anecdotal.
I'd say enforcement's complaint-based out there anyway.
Right.
And Randy, have you received many complaints about that area?
I can barely hear you, turn again.
Have you received many complaints?
We have not had any accidents out there, and I couldn't tell you without following the system.
Right.
Right, so I, the point that I'm, the point that I'm making is, we, you know, presumably, if we remove the restriction on parking, which I am in favor of, totally in favor, presumably, it means that there are more people parking out there, which is must, you know, it increases more people.
Mm-hmm.
So there's got to be some potential increase in risk. The only, the thing that I'm asking is, what's the downside of simply saying, let's remove it from the traffic code, but let's leave some time between tonight and when it takes effect, for us to have some reasonable precautions that we discussed in June worked out before it actually happens? I'm curious what the downside is to doing it.
I think it's, it's all a decision of the board, and you're weighing
I would have a tendency to agree with Taylor, I, again, to my point, we're at the end of season, what's the rush? I agree with you, I don't see the liability, but I think it's a good idea to, you know, to give it some time, to do our thing, your thing, with, and Randy's thing with MDOT, to decide what they're going to post, what safety signs are going to be put up, and, you know, that be done before what I call the date certain.
I think practically, it makes no difference either way.
All right.
Right, and it just, I, to be clear, like, I'm totally in agreement with Allison, like, it makes, it makes sense to remove it and draw people apart.
Yep.
The, I was very comfortable with the way that Audra came up with the plan, and we discussed it in June, and I would continue to feel comfortable about that, knowing that the restrictions wouldn't be lifted until, you know, pick a date, let's call it the end of the year, that way you have some time to figure out what are precautions that we discussed in June, might be, sometime in the workout of the year, it's each, by the time people are actually in reality using the parking space, which is going to be, I don't know, in the spring when the snowbanks melt, but we know exactly what we're going to do. It just seems, it just seems like a reasonable way to approach it, in my mind, but maybe I'm
All right.
maybe I'm a pessimist here.
Allison?
So, I don't know who is responsible for this, but there is a, there's, in one of those areas at least, there's not, not a no parking sign anymore, and I've gotten many gleeful messages from people who, well, many, I would say, like, three, that, from people who are parking there now, I would not call it the end of the season at all, people who are responsibly parking in one of the turnouts where people have been parking for generations, and they're now able to swim there with their kids, or, or, these are, like, I'll say, you know, Jeff Senders was, was one of the people that said, thank you so much for Camden's life board, this is awesome, I can now, you know, legally do the same thing that we've all been doing, anybody who's lived here, I mean, I know I don't have to respect, you know, but I feel like, by saying it doesn't go to effect until the end of the year, that, that we're also kind of giving the police department, my director, your village officer
Mm-hmm.
And there are people swimming there, there are, it's happening responsibly, and I
Okay.
It troubles me.
All right. Mark, do you, Mark, you have your hand up?
Yes, give us what I feel about it. Just spent an hour or so talking about putting in a sidewalk for public safety, and now we're talking about taking out signs that would reduce the safety, because we haven't had time to figure out the safety problem yet. I don't think it's a race, and it was something end of season, getting close to the season. I will vote on this, because I don't think we need to rush into this, and, for safety's sake, because some people can feel uncomfortable. Like, we have a plan, I'd like to see the plan followed out, like we talked about just now before, before we just take signs off, because some people want to park somewhere.
Okay. Jenna?
It's Jenna, may I interject very quickly?
Yes.
I will say that my mom and her partner, who are in their late 60s and early 70s, are among the people who have lauded the missing parking signs. I've heard from people of all ages, all walks, a lot of people that just are on their way home, going to the village, and they are so happy, they're not feeling they're violating the law by jumping into a lake for 10 minutes and going off. I mean, this is already happening, I mean, I know this is, it's been happening since I, as long as I can remember. I'm typically very much on the side of caution and safety, I also don't see a major amount upon in, in what we're conducting, really, in that much.
Thank you, Jenna. And just to be clear, from my perspective, again, what I'm hearing from you is, as far as the date certain idea, which I kind of lean towards Taylor, it, you don't see it as being a big difference, because
No.
Because we're basically going to get rid of the parking restriction.
This is fully, this is fully a debate between all of you, because practically speaking, it's not going to make a difference.
That's right.
To be honest, if you vote, if you vote
Yes.
to move forward with it right away, without a date certain, we are not, I'm just being practical, we are not going to be able to go and remove all those no parking signs tomorrow.
Of course not.
We're just not going to be able to do that.
And you're not going to be able to negotiate with MDOT on what's going to come next for a long time either.
Right, it's just, it's going to take us some time, so, I mean
But are we going to go and enforce it? I mean, we're going to be, it makes a difference for the people that might get a ticket when they park, so I don't see why it's, it makes no difference whether we wait or not, it makes a difference for a lot of people for the rest of the summer.
Quite honestly, we're not going to be enforcing it
Anyway.
one way or the other.
We're not enforcing it, I'd drive, I'd drive, I'd drive mother all the time.
To be honest, because why would we do that? We know that the board doesn't really want us to enforce no parking there, so it would be, that would just not be a smart thing to do.
Go ahead, Randy. Randy?
Nobody gets a ticket, just have them bring it to me, and we'll have a discussion.
There you go, fine, sounds good.
Do we allow the sign?
Back to our, everybody's
No parking, but we don't really need it.
No parking, but we don't mean it.
I mean
Yeah, I get it, we have a motion in a second, I'm going to go for roll call vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Taylor?
No.
I'll vote aye, because I don't think it's worth the debate. Thank you so much, good points, let's move on at the end of our public hearing. I want to go on to the third item, which is the approval of the board manager from August 4th, 2020. Any comments or motion on the minutes?
Sorry, I'm waiting, that was, no, there.
The motion we approved, the man says, Mr. [inaudible].
Discussion, comments, roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much. Item four on our agendas, our consent agenda, is for six approvals of Vittler slash lodging licenses, they are for Didra's Roadside at 251 Belfast Road for a Vittler license, Elms of Camden at 84 Elm Street for a lodging slash Vittler license, Mariner's Restaurant at 35 Main Street for a Vittler license, Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street for a Vittler license, Sea Dog Brewing at 1 Main Street for a Vittler license, and lastly, Zoot Coffee at 31 Elm Street for a Vittler license. Do I have any objections to the items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, they're hereby approved. Not hearing any, they're hereby approved. Item five, we have two items to discuss. One is, the first one is to, a discussion about the modification, I believe it is a modification, to the animal control policy regarding stray cats. Who wants to lead that one?
So I'll, I'll start it off. So I think policy was probably a misnomer, it's more of a practice.
Okay.
So, for many years now, the, the animal control officer has, is also a police officer, and they reside within the police department, and it has been their practice not to accept cats that are stray or lost, or when there's a call-in about a cat. And there is, you know, in the memo that I've given you, you know, there's a lot of, you know, sort of, in the statute around what we must do with dogs, and we're very much required to control dogs running at large, but really, there's no specific requirement for cats. So really, this is something that, you know, we have the discretion to figure out how we want to handle this situation. We do, of course, have the authority to seize or trap cats or any other small animals. So a lot of the rationale behind why we don't take cats comes from our agreement with PAWS, and all municipalities are required by statute to have an animal shelter that they enter into an agreement with to accept stray animals. And as part of our agreement with PAWS, any animal that we bring to them, they have to have already received veterinary care that they needed when they were picked up, or the animal shelter provides that veterinary care. But if it's, if, when we're bringing, as a municipality, a stray animal into the animal shelter that is in need of care, PAWS chooses where it's going to send it off for care, and then they bill it back to the municipality if, if the owner of the animal can't be found.
Right.
You know, typically with dogs, because they have to be registered, that's not really an issue, because if something happens, the owner ends up becoming responsible for it.
Right.
But cats, it can be a little more difficult, because sometimes it's hard to track down the owner, or they could be strays, or whatever the case may be. So, and I go into detail, you know, in, in the memo regarding this, but, you know, there was, as with anything, this stem for a situation in the past where, you know, the town at one point did pick up stray cats, and they brought them into the animal shelter, and after, I think about, this was many years ago, but after about $3,500 worth of care to the animal, a bill was sent to the municipality. So it was just, it became a, sort of a financially risky proposition, bringing in stray cats. However, you know, we are at a point where, you know, we need to enter into a new agreement with PAWS, so this is our chance to work with them to change that provision, so they really treat, because if a individual were to bring in a lost or stray cat, they're treated very differently than a municipality. They, they can drop them off, and, you know, the, sorry, the animal shelter has requirements around what they need to do if they receive an animal...
Right.
...that's sick or, you know, injured. So when, when it's an individual bringing in an animal, they follow that procedure, but they don't bill that individual for the care of that animal, animal, if they're not able to find the owner, whereas with us, they do.
They would.
So, you know, it's, it's our chance to work with PAWS to try and come up with an agreement where they treat animals that we bring in very similarly to if a, you know, member of the general public would bring an animal in.
Right.
And that's, that's sort of what I'd recommend that we try to do moving forward, if, if indeed the select board is interested in the town changing our practice and accepting cats and small animals.
So basically, basically renegotiation of our agreement with PAWS to determine if somebody bring, if we bring in a stray cat, that there's going to be some cost to in the town, whatever that, whatever that agreement is.
Yeah.
Bob, may I interject?
You may.
Jenna, I'm actually, I'm one of the ones that has been there, I've gotten a number of calls, and I'm just, it's a number of people, and I have a passenger just by a car, and following my driveway, and I called the county police, and they said, we're not going to help, the PAWS didn't even hold, they don't know what to do. And I'm sitting there looking at the memo, and, I mean, they may not, reading how their mentions evolve, but, injured slash ill animal, municipality agrees that it's contained appropriate veterinary care for injured slash ill animals prior to delivering to PAWS shelters, as required by Title 7 and RSA Section 39, 38, as may be amended.
Okay.
The municipality will deliver to injured or ill animals, because it's out of contain appropriate veterinary care, also delivery of the animals, care of the veterinary care if necessary.
Right.
I understand that they do, I don't, what sticks for me is that we are not helping people that don't, they, I mean, what's that, go out and defend yourself, I just, I feel like there's got to be something better, other than that, the renegotiation with PAWS, a change in policy, I think so, but, but I think it was a responsibility, I don't want to hang on, I just feel that, that is the happy medium, I think that other towns can do it.
Right, okay. Thank you, Jenna. And Mark?
I have a question, I'm, I'm sure about something. We don't do it for cats, but we do do it for dogs, what is the cost for us for the vet bills for dogs? We do pick it for that, correct?
Well, like I said before, with dogs, because there's a registration process, there, I can't think of any scenarios where we haven't, you know, where a dog's been brought in and the owner isn't found.
Right.
Is that correct, Randy? Am I...
That's correct.
Or, yeah, yep.
Very rarely do we get a stray at some point.
All right. Other comments? Allison?
At what point are we going to have the opportunity to book an agreement with PAWS? And does our decision about what to do tonight...
Yep, right. Now, you...
...involuntarily on that, or also, is it always, different, you know, different animal shelters, we all do things in different ways?
Right.
So it seems like, you know, every, every time that I've ever seen it come up, that we agree to, you know, choose PAWS or whoever as the, whatever, isn't there some, some requirement that we choose an animal shelter to be our, what's the wording for that? We choose, doesn't each municipality have to have some kind of an agreement with the animal shelter?
Yeah.
So every time I've seen that happen, it's kind of just been like, well, of course, yeah, there hasn't been much discussion. So is there an opportunity to really discuss that more this time? And I'm not personally terrified of vet bills, but I do think that there's also a larger question here about, you can just environmental responsibility. So I, I like cats, just, it's fine, but they, there's a larger issue with their impact on the environment and the ability to spread diseases, so I guess my main concern with our current policy for our current practice, the way it is, is that we could be leaving a lot of feral cats in the environment, who are not only going to be unvaccinated, most likely, reproducing, and then also killing many, many birds, which is, you know, a very well-documented environmental problem. So I think it would be good to dig into a little bit with whoever we work with, on like, okay, well, what, what is the, you know, what are the science-based problems with them?
Right, right.
Because I, I agree, I don't think that taxpayers want to be paying tens of thousands of dollars for, you know, rehabilitating feral cats, like, they come in, I mean, I don't, I don't, no, but I'm very in favor of changing the policy, because I think it makes sense for, just for the environment in general, and for the safety of, of everybody not having unvaccinated cats.
Right, right. Maybe it's as simple as Audrey, as we don't have, at this point, if we sit here today, we don't have any input from PAWS or anybody about what might be the elements of including cats in this equation. Wouldn't it be prudent for us to have that discussion, or with whomever, to bring it back, so we have a more substantive understanding of whether this is, you know, extremely expensive or marginal?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would say that if you, if you all want us to change our practice so we're accepting cats, that before we officially do that, we have this conversation with PAWS to figure out what is...
I think that's...
You know, what's, what's their sort of broader policy within the community for how they're going to accept and deal with these animals?
Yeah, and I think that's, in my mind...
So we're, we're not just addressing, well, it's, we're looking at the financial impact on the town, as well as what's the plan for when you receive them, what are you doing with them?
Right, I think, and I think that flesh on the bone is necessary, in my opinion, for the select board to make a rational decision here, so...
Right, because when I, you know, when I was in a different community, and we went to a different animal shelter, I was able to have that conversation with them, and it was very much, you know, with, with cats, it was spayed, neutered, and then released back into the community.
Right.
And I just don't know, because we've never had that conversation with PAWS about what they do.
And they're very proactive, I know that, so why don't we, why don't we...
I would...
Mark?
I can make a motion.
Wait, one second, Jenna. Mark had a comment.
I was just going to ask, kind of, I was curious, you know, I, I think it's really important to talk about PAWS, because I would think, I know that a lot of nonprofits are having a really hard time finding money right now.
Yep.
I'm comfortable dumping a financial hardship on PAWS when they do such good work. So I was going to ask Jenna, you know, she knows much more about this, it's the best way to handle this.
Yep. Jenna, you were making a motion?
I, I was going to make a motion, this, this is something that I feel does need some adequate attention, I, I've talked to some people who have been sort of told to bugger off, for, for lack of a better word, and I think that's something we do need to address, and need to be providing resources without, without being careful, but I was just making a motion that we table this, until we can get Shelley Butler, the executive director of PAWS, to join us and to discuss this. I know that they have a veterinary, they have their own veterinarian, and Mark makes a good point about the financial hardship, and that maybe we could discuss, I think, a discussion with Shelley, so we can all make the best, the best of this, would really be a prudent and good thing to do. So my motion is that we table this for a future meeting when PAWS executive director, Shelley Butler, can be included.
And I would second that.
Discussion? Roll call. Taylor? Taylor said aye. Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
I love this music, I love this Hollywood squares. Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, aye also, 5-0. Thank you very much, Jenna, it's a good idea. Secondly, on our, on this item, we were talking, which we are going to speak to, it sounds like an, an early, early bird special on the snowball for season passes, it looks like we're talking about September 1st, per the information. Do you want to lead, or Beth?
Yes, so...
Just before the start, Bill here, that's it for me tonight, those were my issues, so enjoy the rest of your meeting, folks.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to stick around.
Ciao. No, no.
Maybe we'll have supper.
Good idea.
Bye-bye.
Good, so Beth, you want to lead?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask for support and permission to open up the early bird season passes for September 1st. Typically, we sell these in the month of October, but we're thinking that it would give us an opportunity to get out there and talk about what our plans are for the winter, and folks can purchase these online, maybe in mail, and then we'll check cash, you know, they could drop it at the town office, and in our mailbox for us. And then what we'll do is start, we're using last year's pictures, or if they want to email us a new picture, we'll use a new picture, and we will sound mail them back to them. It, it would also help us gauge how many people are, you know, planning on buying season passes.
So we thought, in addition to, you know, all the factors that Beth talked about, given that there's so much uncertainty around the budgeting process, this would give us a really good early indication of where we might stand with season pass sales.
The only question I had is, just to be clear, is these early September 1st, are the same early bird price as was October?
Yes.
Okay. Mark?
We let it go from September 1st.
Right, okay. Just wanted, I didn't know you've had an early, early bird special, special, but it's, it's the same, same early bird price, but it's just being, taken back to September 1st.
And offered longer, so people have...
Got it, got it. Mark?
I think it's an excellent idea to really gauge, sound, give people an opportunity to think about it. I think, as we've seen with a lot of hiking, and, and you can't buy a kayak or a bicycle these days, with hopefully great weather, the snow will be a great place for people to use their...
Right, right.
The one, the one caution I would have is, right now, trusting people are going to get their applications in and back to US Mail, there seems to be a bit of a problem, but other than that, I think it's a great idea.
Taylor?
I agree, I think it's a great idea, very happy we're doing this, and I like the idea that we're using opportunity to get the message out early about snowball, and to people about making our safe preparation possible.
Right, right. Anybody else? Not seeing any other hands, do I hear a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we start our passes for the snowball on September 1st.
Can I have a second?
Beth, what?
Can we have a discussion?
Well, the second, yeah. One, a second. Jenna? Did you say...
I definitely did.
Okay. Discussion, go ahead, Beth.
Well, I just, I wanted to also ask the board, I've looked into other ski areas and what they're doing about their season pass assurance guarantee, if we sell these passes and we are unable to open, are we willing, as a town, typically, we, our, our passes are not refundable and not transferable, but my question to the board would be, are we willing to either push their pass to the next year, or give them some kind of partial refund if something does happen?
Well...
People are going to want to know what our assurance guarantee is.
Well, honestly, I think that could have been brought up earlier on the agenda to talk about, that's a whole nother topic versus season passes of September 1st. I think we should walk before we run, but it's a good question, but I would like to see some information, recommendations on what cost impact that could have, blah, blah, it's just, it's just not as simple yes or no tonight, I couldn't make that, I couldn't decide that tonight. Allison, you had your hand up? Allison?
I think, when you said that you wanted to see things now, I guess I was about to say that I kind of anticipated that, that exactly what that said would be part of the discussion.
Okay.
But I also agree that it is going to be a longer one, and kind of goes, it's not the conversation we had about this little like that last time, that we wanted to see more of a, similar to like the school's reopening plan, some, you know, some kind of reopening plan for the snow hall, so I guess, I don't know whether it makes more sense to table both of these things, or maybe that's at Beth's discretion, whether she feels that we need to have a policy for refunds and that kind of thing in place before we move ahead with this, or, you know...
Good, good point, good point.
I would be comfortable voting tonight to leave that at her discretion, if she wants to move forward with our early bird thing right away, that would be okay with me, but if she's feeling nervous, that would be understandable.
Yep, yep. No, that's great, great, great points. Go ahead, Beth.
Well, your next meeting is September 1st.
Fourth.
Oh. Well, what do you want to do?
I would like something to in place, like I said, we researched the other ski areas, they put, sometimes they put dates to it, sometimes they said if they had, you know, partial winter, or if they didn't open at all. But there's quite a few out there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, but if, we could, I just feel very uncomfortable with not having a budget set, we're going to another budget meeting, probably in that meeting, September, what is it, 4th? Look at the budget, we could have that discussion on September 4th, but to just at least get the ball rolling, let's get this approval for the early bird, early bird special, and, and then, I would challenge the, the town staff to look at what, what they would recommend, and what impact they think it would have in the budget.
Right. I mean, we could always, we're, we're always free to later go back and, and grant refunds...
Absolutely.
...for things.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That we don't necessarily have to decide.
Right. Mark?
I, I, I think that's the idea of whether it be refunds, I like the idea of covering the past for the following year, maybe give it a good, good opportunity. I think there's something there that we need to be prepared to do. So I wouldn't be remiss, I wouldn't feel bad about voting to okay the passes today, knowing that we will make some, you know,
Okay.
decisions down the line.
All right. We have a motion, a second, to approve the early bird special, special to September 1st start with an understanding that we'll discuss the rest on the, on the budget time. Roll call, vote. Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor? Taylor? Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob aye also. Five zero. I'm gonna, if it's okay with the board, move discussion items on item seven, because there's a couple in there that we want to get to, if that's okay, and then we'll come back to item six. Discussion items are moving pop-up Camden currently on Fridays, correct, to Saturdays same time?
No, different time.
Okay. It's 11 to four on Saturdays?
It would be same hours as the farmer's market is when we're
Oh, okay, okay.
proposing, or asking about moving.
Okay, so just, but it'd be one day only?
Yes.
Not Friday and Saturday, just Saturdays?
Just Saturday.
Okay. Discussion?
And I'll let
Mark?
Can you repeat that? It would be the same hours as the farmer's market?
No, yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. The one thing, one thing that came up to me regarding the farmer's market, there was a terrific sign for the pop-up, which I think makes a great idea because if people are already there, it gives the people more reasons to come to the market, which would be a great idea. But somebody brought up the fact that the farmer's market would be nice to have a similar sign to the pop-up market does. So I'd like to see that happen as far as
Okay, all right, thank you. Other, wait a minute, Jeremy. Other select board comments on this item?
I guess I was thinking we may listen first and then
Yeah, I, I think that Holly and Jeremy, they've been working with the vendors and they've got sort of a lot of feedback on this.
All right, yeah, fine, fine.
And, yeah.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Let me just comment on the sign issue with Mark, and then I'll intro, and then I'll probably transition to Holly. I spoke with Mike Bonner from Bonner Farms, and he's the president of the farmer's market group the other day, and did mention, I heard that there may be an issue with signage. He was surprised at that, honestly. He, but he said he'll, I told him that we can work with the farmer's market if they want to sign mark. So I did see.
All right.
It wasn't, it wasn't on his radar, to be honest with you, as a resident farmer market.
Okay.
That said, I did reach out, and Holly can fill in for me, and Holly's been really amazing with this. You know, she's got a lot of connections. So, you know, we were starting to hear from, from the vendors, we don't have a lot of vendors that participated at all in, in the Hoppo Friday. It's kind of, you know, it's a new thing, so it's hard to get, to bring people in. But we're trying, we're doing our best to do that. You know, we were curious if, if Saturday would work better for everyone, it would just kind of work, be very compatible with the farmer's market. And I reached out to the farmer's market folks, Mike and Marcia, Bonner Farms and East Mill Farms, who they're the president, vice president of association. That's who I deal with always when it comes to things at the farm and at the tannery. And reached out to them saying, you know, we'd like to do this. And I said, I respect that you folks have this agreement with the city, with the town, an annual thing at the tannery, and, and I don't want to do anything that is going to stir pot with the folks, and I just want to make sure you guys are okay with it. Reached back out to me, he said, we love the idea that I'm, we have some concerns with the number of vendors needing, just because they are trying to manage their numbers, right, due to COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and everything works, and parking works and all that. So he, and he's very open to it. I said, honestly, I think right now we've got about five vendors that would like to participate, and said he thought that would work very well.
Okay, okay.
As in the availability for states. And I actually asked Holly to, speaking, again, to, to meet with those folks and then just see if that works. So
All right.
Holly, does that work? Does that work for them? Did you try to?
So, so what I had, what happened is, this week, I, on Friday, I stopped by the pop-up, and there were only three vendors, one of them being the denim store, and who's been there most every Friday. And the two that I spoke with, one is a new, a new lady, she has no interest in doing Saturday. And in fact, the denim has no interest in doing Saturday. So here we're trying to, you know, help people, and all of us, you know, and it turns out, well, we don't really, the, the night journey guy, he will do it, but he also likes to do Friday too. So, you know, a part of me says we just leave it as it is, and, and our banner says Fridays.
Yep.
And just let it go for now, because we just don't have the, we don't have the people that want to do it.
All right, okay, all right.
And, and as far as that banner too, that banner, when we hung it, I didn't even think about the farmer's market being there on Saturdays.
Yep.
We can certainly move that banner, so it's not, you know, we can take it up and down every, every Friday morning.
Right, right. So Holly, just, just to be clear, Holly, I just heard you say, is this idea for Saturdays is on, on the shelf for now?
I, yeah.
All right, all right.
I just want people that are interested.
All right, so other than correcting and helping with the sign thing, this is a non-agenda item tonight, then?
Yeah, it's turned out to be.
All right, all right. Thank you very much. Moving on to, Allison?
Thank you. I guess I was kind of excited to see this coming back on, on the agenda because I'm wondering, first of all, if there's any way that we can just give our approval to, like, sort of say, Polly, at your discretion, um, and
We can, we can.
Please, I want, you know, I, acting with the farmer's market, keeping people happy, that's, that's important to me. But the feedback that I've gotten so far on this is that people love the concept, but that it may be a little too, um, bitchin', that, you know, for, for different people, it might work at different times, but then also the licensing requirement, and the insurance, and if there's a way to streamline that a little bit, I understand the town's always got, they're, they're scared of all of these risks and liabilities, all the people that might sue us. But sometimes we just say, like, the toboggan shoots, you know, community is more important. And so, yes, I
Okay. We, we can certainly do that, Allison, if you want, if we want to make a motion to
I try to, well, I don't know, we just started talking about this, but I think other people, some people really do want to talk about this a little bit more, because I think it's a cool idea, and that it could be a little bit more flexible, so that somebody maybe can go on the website, fill out a form, and, you know, we have set some kind of liability or figure out some, I feel confident that people that we have with the town would figure out some way of making it a little bit easier, and then if there's a problem, we can figure it out. But so, Sally who sells earrings made of seashells, you know, and is just trying to make it through the pandemic, my idea would do that. And also that the hours could just be
Right. What's your recommendation, Allison? What are you, what are you recommending? And so you said to approve something here, to give flexibility to Holly or to whoever, is that what you're proposing we do?
And I'm also proposing that we not be on a level of, like, half scare, we need to be about liability. We might go to a lower level of
All right.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I actually was looking for feedback from people who know more about this. I'm, I'm telling you what I've heard, that it's a little bit restrictive in terms of signing up, is that I'm wondering if it would be helpful for Holly and Jeremy to just get a little bit more flexibility from the select board, so that everybody has an idea, you don't have to come back and
That's a good idea. But real quickly, Jeremy?
Yeah, really quickly, the, the Peddlers ordinance that was passed a number of years ago allows you to offer town manager or whoever, or their designated analyst, you have the authority, like, you already have it in place, that allows Audra to put it to me or Holly to, to manage, next time I will say Audra, and Holly and I have this conversation about the insurance. We're going to work on that, Allison, and, and get folks in there and not worry so much about some of that certification stuff.
Right, right.
We'll work on that. And I would suggest that, what's wrong with Friday and Saturday? If someone wants to do Friday, let it continue. If someone wants to go in on Saturday, let's make that work. If someone wants to go in Saturday
Yep, yep. So
Just let Audra and I and Holly make that work, and I think
Right. That's, that's exactly my point. Why don't we just have a motion that says we give the town manager, as a leader, the authority, the responsibility?
I'll make that motion, we allow the town manager to make a decision, and simplify the process for Friday or Saturday.
Or Sunday, or whatever.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't limit it to Friday or Saturday, I would limit it to their discretion as
Appropriate days and times.
Appropriate days, appropriate days with appropriate procedures and protections, and just allow them to go with it.
The Peddlers are.
Yeah, right, right. The Peddlers are. That motion work for you, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thanks for the seconds. Roll call, vote. Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob. Thank you so much. Good idea. Second item is, a discussion item is the YMCA skate park. Audra, do you want to lead into where we are with this?
We do have a couple people wishing to make public comment. We did have somebody in the waiting room.
I don't see anybody there. Let's, why don't you go into your intro?
Oh, I see.
What?
People, I see Gideon.
I don't.
Yeah, he's, he's there.
There.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the preface to the, the conversation. What am I talking about specifically right now in regards to the skate park?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
To make your, you know, good
Did you have a
Make a comment?
Right.
Yeah, so basically, all I want to say about the skate park, kind of, the community revolving around it is that, obviously, it means a lot to us. We understand the situation with the teens that are selling it, and that not much can be done about that. But of course, like, in whatever way possible, we'd love for it to stay in Camden. I don't think that, like, by any means is it completely, like, the best situation for it to go 30 minutes away to South Compton. Of course, I feel like with the skate park in general, like the halfpipe and the condition it is right now, because it hasn't been taken care of these past 10 years, it's definitely not going to be easy to obviously move that skate park and put it somewhere else. And I feel like the most beneficial way to deal with the situation would be trying to get as many resources off the skate park, and then trying to rebuild or build a new one somewhere else in Camden, like, whether it be the tannery, or it even be where the old Camden skate park used to be, which is the parking lot next to the teen center.
Mm-hmm.
But I totally feel like, I just know so many kids, and I feel like this skate park where it is right now is very hidden, and I feel like not open to the public. So I, I feel like not too many people know about how many people skate park, like skateboard at that park. So any way that we can make it, like, public instead of private, which has been for the past 15 years, is something that is going to be really positive for our community. And I think especially right now with COVID, it's something that kids need, like, it's like a very valuable asset to this community.
Right. Thank you very much, Gideon. Thank you. Audra, back to your intro about where we are at. Just summarize where we're at with this skate park issue and the YMCA?
Yeah, so as everyone knows now, the teen center building and grounds are going to be sold by the Y to a school, and they're moving to the bus barn. And unfortunately, the, the school that has bought the grounds, they can't keep the skate park there, they need that space for their students. So the Y, they're willing to give the equipment to the town of Camden, and it's, it's, really, they're giving it back to the town of Camden because Camden donated that equipment to the Y when the skate park was moved from its location on Ford Nolton Street, the parking lot that we're now leasing from Matt Orne to its current location. So the Y is more than happy to give the equipment back to the town of Camden. So if the select board is interested in, you know, moving forward with us kind of looking at options for locating it in Camden, the first thing that we could do is accept the equipment. Luckily, because, you know, we've got, you know, people like Rick Seibel on staff who have a lot of memory and history with the town, Rick remembers when the town accepted the equipment from MBNA, disassembled it, stored it in the wastewater treatment plant before it was given to the Y, reassembled on its current site.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that we can do, we can do quickly, and we're going to need to take that step pretty quickly, because the equipment needs to be out of its current location by the 8th of September.
Okay, so a couple of weeks.
Yep, so we're, but we're able to do that. And like I said, luckily, you know, Rick was involved in the original disassembly
Right.
storage and reassembly process. And also Beth and her team have taken a look at it as well.
Okay.
And they've seen that it, it is, it was built so that it can be disassembled
Uh-huh.
and, you know, removed and reassembled.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I'd propose, is that we accept the equipment, we store it somewhere, and that would give us some time to sort of, you know, go and look at what our options are for
Location.
potential location, you know, and all the different factors that would be involved in that, so that, you know, the board can make a decision on
All right.
you know, moving forward with this.
Okay. Mark, your hand up first?
Yes. Obviously, this is, this is a very important common issue. We, I've read every letter that's been sent to this, the select board about this, more letters than I have basically any other subject. To give a little bit of background, because a lot of the background out there was not, was not covered, the reason the Y, the Y's had a tough time because of COVID, they're getting out of the building, but I just wondered, we should be, the teen center will continue to operate. They're selling the building to one of the tenants of the building, who's a gentleman that runs a school for challenge, challenge gift, which is a good thing. They will not be able to maintain the skate park and insurance, whatever. So that's why it needs to The teen center will now, just to make people aware, the teen center will now rent what they've been using as the teen center from the new owner until such time as he has finished in the plans, they've worked out the schools, they will move the teen center to the bus park. So the teen center will survive, which I thought was, was very important in this whole process. I have to disagree with Audra right now about just moving it and storing it. Think that we have a situation right now, again, more people have commented, said they have seen, we have a situation with COVID right now that people need to be outside, they need to go places. I would suggest that we move the equipment, break it down, reassemble it in its original location in the parking lot, as a temporary place, so the kids have a place to go. And there's something, wintertime, as we work out where it can go, we can move. But I don't think we should break it down here at this point. I think that would be a big mistake. I would like to see it moved to the parking lot as a temporary situation. I have also regretted that the friends of the tannery are, that's one of the things that they would be interested in seeing as part of the tannery grounds, which is of course a completely different conversation. But that's where I feel we should go.
Allison, Allison, Alice?
So, yeah, as, as Mark already said, it's actually been really, I knew skateboard park was popular just because I'm often over in that area and, and I see it, and my kids are present, use it. But I didn't know quite how popular it was, and it is. And the letters that we've gotten have been just unimaginably heartwarming. But what's particularly struck me have been the girls who have written, some of them, who have talked about that, you know, this kind of male-dominated sport, and stories about getting fully in middle school, and having this as an outlet and an opportunity to, you know, and an opportunity to, you know, become greater and getting to this, you know, sport that's traditionally not been so open to them. Um, and then also just the awareness that somebody today sent me a picture, a video of their seven-year-old on roller blades, um, at the skate park and talking about how important it was to their family and the,
Mm-hmm.
just why, why these types of opportunities are good for kids. And I don't need to, well, I need to convince anybody here, so, but it, it's, it's been actually really inspiring. And I, so I hope, I think our goal could be to try to make it better than ever and make it more accessible than ever. And, um, I, I probably most everyone agrees with me. I would hesitate tonight to get into, um, too much detail about, like, where it should go. I, I, I agree that the, the, that parking lot and the tannery are very good options. I'm also really hesitant to commit to, like, long-term storage just because, um, I guess, I, I think that we should ask, tonight, we should express enthusiastic support for accepting the equipment and finding a solution and then ask town staff with, in, with, working with the, um, new property owner, who's a really awesome guy, and, um, evaluating what it would take for, you know, a couple of different scenarios.
Okay.
Is that, uh.
Okay.
You know, once we have more information and town staff has had a chance to really evaluate what our options are, but, um.
Right. Great, great points, Allison, I totally agree. Jenna, you had a point?
I do, and mostly I'm going to echo both Mark and Allison. I do think disassembling it and putting it in storage for an extended period is not advisable. I've seen that kind of happen and things go into the ether. I have been very heartened by the number of people and the diversity of people who have come out in full support of this. And I can only do my job just to, to move forward the agenda of our, our residents. And I think it's really important.
Okay.
Um, if it, if it continues.
Okay.
Um, and I, I just, I think with the number of people, I wanted to point that with the number of people that are stretching together and bringing ideas, I feel like some of the maintenance that needs to be done, we need to be able to put together some really strong groups of people willing to help with that.
Right.
Um, and so I'm full support of the making of the new home.
All right, um, Taylor?
Uh, yeah, um, I agree on all accounts. Uh, it was very nice to see all the letters from people and, you know, it's interesting that, um, I, you know, I haven't thought about the skate park in years and I remember it was first built in that original spot on Nolton Street when I was a student and a lot of us were students at that time, walking down Nolton Street. It was right up near, seeing people using it. Uh, I think there's something to that, uh, that is an, an obvious public resource, uh, you know. So, um, you know, I, I see, I see the, my, I'm totally in favor of moving it. I would rather see us move it to the Nolton Street parking lot like Mark is suggesting than go into storage. So I'm open to waiting on making that decision until maybe a couple of weeks from now.
Mm-hmm.
But if the urgency to make that decision comes up between now and then, um, I would rather see it go to that parking lot than go into storage.
Okay. Yes, Mark?
My understanding, when I spoke to the, uh, to Melissa, the CEO of the Y, her, her, her understanding is what it needs to be moved by August thirty-first. If Audra has some more information than that.
I do, I spoke with Jed today and he said that because school's starting on September eighth for him, we have until pretty much then to move the equipment.
Okay.
So we're not going to, unless we make a decision tonight, we're not going to have a lot of time to plan and move it.
Right.
Well, and I guess that's why I don't want to make any promises about being able to set it up and in a usable state anywhere until I know more about.
Yeah.
what we need to do.
That's the key thing, I think we should, uh, well, first, first, first priority, I think we, we all agree, I'm sure, is to get control of this thing, move it someplace and assess it and maybe repair it and set it up. If, I'm not sure it needs repair.
I mean, and it could be that it's, you know, it's very simple for us to disassemble it, reassemble it on Ford Nolton Street and it's, it's just, you know, it's in as usable a state there as it is now in its current location. We're just not going to know until we do it, so.
So basically, if we give the, the support for doing what you just said, is that's what you're asking from the board?
Well, what I, I think all I can commit to tonight is that we're going to accept the, we're going to accept the equipment, we're going to figure out the state of it and what it's going to take to, to break it down and set it up somewhere else and.
Recommended location?
Well, I would, I would say that, um, you know, really the, the easiest, we'll, we'll first look at Ford Nolton Street because it used to be there, so it stands to reason that, um, that would be a spot that could, um, in the short term, you know, accept the equipment and we could put it there. Um, but like I said, because I don't know exactly what that's going to entail, I don't want to commit to setting it up there and it being usable, because I just don't know if that's going to be the case.
All right.
But it might be and I might be able to report back in two weeks that we've been able to.
In terms of action, do you really, other than the, obviously, select board's support to capture this equipment, do you need, we don't even need a motion for that?
No, no.
Um, I think we have to technically don't, we have to support this, uh, except yes. And so.
True.
Uh, I mean, it certainly can't hurt, you know, move that we accept.
That, that's fine, if you, if you want, I was just pointing out we don't have to. Now, go ahead, Mark.
I, I will second, uh, Allison.
What was the motion?
To accept the equipment as a gift.
Thanks, Allison. Sorry, and a second, Taylor's discussion, we're in discussion mode now, Taylor, go ahead.
I was going to make the same motion as Allison.
All right, cool. Uh, any other comments, discussion, roll call, vote, Allison?
Aye.
Uh, Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye, and I just, I want to clarify that we're voting with, that we're keeping it in Camden as of right now. I don't need to amend that, I mean, that's.
Yes.
We're accepting it, keeping it in Camden.
Yes, that was the motion that was made. Okay, and Bob?
I.
Okay, five zero, thank you very much. Um, last item, well, this, I, in this issue is go over updates. Um, uh, do you want to start, Audra, any updates you have for the public?
Yeah, so, um, apologies, I wasn't able to, I, I wrote up a memo, um, providing a status update on the priority projects, but I wasn't able to get it in the packet in time. So Janice and I will, um, amend the packet so that, um, the final version that's online has this information in it and I'll send it out to the select board and everybody else. But, um, you know, this really came from a conversation that I've had with a few of you around, um, a lot of the projects that are sort of longer-term priorities that we've all committed to. It, as you all know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of steps to move these forward. And it can be really difficult for members of the public to, um, you know, if they're just sort of jumping in or want to get involved or understand what the select board and the town priorities are at the time to kind of know where we are. And so, um, we thought that having this as sort of a semi-regular agenda item might be a good way to, you know, both inform members of the board and, and the staff as to where some of these, um, broader priorities are, but also communicate with the public.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, what's important and where it's at and what some of the background is on it. So, um, just to kind of go through everything and, you know, there, there have been staff members and there have been select board members that have been, um, very, you know, like champions or, you know, the, the sort of key person involved. So I'm going to give the broad overview, but please, any of you who do participate in these projects in any of those roles, I want to open it up to you to jump in and kind of, you know, give your overview.
Five items and item six, please.
Yep, so, um, the first one on the list, the river restoration. So, um, this effort, everybody knows it's directly related to climate change resiliency because a lot of it is focused on, uh, addressing a lot of the, um, you know, flooding that we're seeing from increased rain events and how, and how the river plays a role in that. Um, but because it's such a long-term endeavor and it's going to be comprised of several different projects, I really think it's sort of deserving of its own update outside of just the climate change resiliency work that we're doing. So, um, to give everybody a bit of background, and I know this is redundant for almost everybody here, but for, um, people who haven't been too involved or, or learning about this for the first time, uh, we received both a coastal community grant and a national wildlife, or, um, National Wildlife Foundation grant, um, to comprehensively plan for the restoration of McGuntukook River. And, uh, key to this was assessing options for managing the four town-owned and operated and the two privately-owned and operated dams along the river. And like I said before, a lot of this is planning for flood resiliency. Um, and then in the case of the dam at the very mouth of the river, um, sea level rise due to climate change. And so over the past year, we engaged Midcoast Conservancy to help us project manage these grants and also just work with us on, um, making sure that we have a good plan for community education engagement around these projects because it is such a, um, you know, watershed-scale restoration is something that takes a long time and there's a lot of different facets to it. And we wanted to make sure that we had, um, you know, uh, somebody with expertise in this area. And it's really, it's, it's going to be too big an effort for me or any of the staff members to, um, be involved in every single step that needs to, um, really be attended to if this project's going to be a successful effort. Um, so in terms of the status as to where we are today, so for the feasibility study survey, Interfluv, who's, um, I, they're, they do hydraulic engineering and a lot of work on, um, you know, design and restoration of watersheds. They're, uh, doing a lot of the technical work on this project and they've completed most of the survey work to date. And I think that, um, you know, a lot of people might have seen them sort of around in the river doing that surveying work throughout the summer. Um, we were fortunate enough to, uh, see a few of the, the different dams drawn, or the impoundments of the dams drawn down. Most, um, I think notable was the Knox Mill, uh, gate was opened and, um, the pond was drawn down. So you got a good sense of what a river would look like running through there. But that was also, um, technically very important to the project for, uh, the surveying that needed to be done of the river along that area. And, um, a lot of that work has been done and, um, they've also taken sediment samples and they're, they're putting that out for testing and it's currently being analyzed in a lab. And within the next week or so, we'll have those results back. And based on a lot of the information that, uh, Interfluv has gathered to date, um, they're able to start doing the modeling. And the modeling work is really going to tell us a lot about different options for, uh, you know, what, what we might do with the dams or how we might manage the dams to better be prepared for, um, flood resiliency and a number of different, um, you know, restoration options. And, uh, the, the structural assessment of all the dams, um, that's going to be another thing that's going to, um, require us to draw down some of the impoundments. And that's going to be happening once the modeling has been done. Um, so that's sort of the status with that project. Um, Allison, do you want to jump in and do you have any other updates along those lines?
Um, yeah, I guess the, I, I talk about this a lot, people are always asking me questions. And one of the questions that, um, constantly comes up, and I just want to make sure that, um, hopefully others, like board members too, just can be in a good position to be able to answer is, um, you know, the question about what the different dams are and, and what they do and what's being considered and not considered. And we don't have enough time for a, a full lesson on that, but the really important sensible message to, um, the unity is that there are certain dams that, uh, that impact McGuntukook Lake and Norton Pond and the air, the Shertail Swimming Area, so these large bodies of water that are costled or docked or bow and all these things. There are three dams that do that, the two McGuntukook Lake dams and the east and west dam. And they control the water levels in all of McGuntukook Lakes and Norton Pond. Um, and no other dams have any impact whatsoever on that, those lake levels. And then we've got Seabright Dam, which you all sort of become familiar with. That one controls the level, um, from the Seabright Dam, sort of Shertail area on that, um, at Hudson Park. That's the only dam that has any impact on those levels. Though those dams are not being evaluated for removal, um, that's no part of the, of the grant and sort of none to be non-starter. Those are being evaluated for sort of more efficient ways of operating them, um, opportunities for lower maintenance costs, um, and possible fish passage, but not for any kind of removal. And, um, the dams that are being at for, uh, all kinds of different options are the lower ones that are downtown and the ones that really have the possibility of impact flooding, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a very, uh, that's.
Item two.
All right, so climate change resiliency, and I'm going to kind of fly through this because there is a lot going on. Um, so a lot of you know that, uh, we had a summer intern and that was, um, we were fortunate enough to, um, have an intern through Bowdoin College's, uh, Environmental Studies Program. And we shared the cost with Bowdoin College. Uh, Lauren Cafes, she's been fantastic, very proactive, um, she's worked directly with Jeremy and she's done a lot of adaptation planning. She's, um, written a draft section in our, um, for, uh, our comprehensive plan that we'll bring forward to the, the select board and, and others to talk about, um, focusing on, uh, climate change resiliency and sea level rise. And she, um, looked to the town of York that had a very strong section in their comp plan on this. Uh, she's also working on the High Watermark Initiative, um, with, uh, the state and FEMA and, um, collaborating towards climate solutions, which is through the Mitchell Institute. And that's a partnership with fellows from the University of Maine and Machias, Bowdoin and Middlebury. And they're going out and doing some stakeholder engagement to better identify barriers to building capacity and, um, around, uh, climate change resiliency. And also providing opportunities for coastal communities to better understand how they can mitigate adapt, uh, and do adaptation and, uh, also improving their resiliency to climate change. Um, another thing, we're participating in the Governor's Office of Innovation Policy in the Future and their pilot project, um, that's, uh, intended to assist Maine municipalities in how they can improve resiliency, uh, to climate change. Um, but it also includes other kinds of major, um, sort of unintended situations. Um, another, uh, we're participating in the Governor's Climate Council work groups. Um, we're also, uh, starting, Jeremy's starting to work really closely with Steve Pixley on getting into sort of the nuts and bolts of the report, or the vulnerability assessment report that was completed by Wood. So that was the engineering study through the Penn Bay Resiliency Project. So they're working together to try to identify some of the details in that report that we're going to need to have a really good hold on if we're going to move that forward for how we want to plan for the future of the public landing and some of the infrastructure, um, along the harbor, particularly the, you know, the, the publicly-owned, our infrastructure that we own and the interface with some of the, um, the private property along there. Um, we're also, um, participating in, as a member of the Maine Climate Change Adaptation Providers Network. And, um, you know, this is, we're working with, um, you know, on a pilot project with members from Maine Sea Grant. And we're, just a lot of this, uh, ongoing sort of resiliency strategy work. Um, and Jeremy, which one of those, um, sort of covers the, the, um, grant opportunity that you were speaking with Mr. Hauser about?
Yeah, that's the, yeah, the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation in the Future, actually. Uh, they're doing a pilot program and town in, and because I think of the work that we've been doing and, I, over the last couple of years, Maine, Sea Grant, the Mitchell Institute, the other Maine D E P, the other, um, Roman Marine Resources, all these partners that are making up this expectation, um, network. I think they reached out to, they reached out to me because of those connections and that work that I've been doing kind of behind the scenes that I don't think we'll really know that's happening. Um, they reached out, so I participated in a, um, questioning through with Tex Hauser, who's the former land development director for the city of South Portland. On the, uh, cutting edge when it comes to a lot of this stuff, um, in the state of Maine. Uh, he's no longer there, he's a consultant working for the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation in the Future right now. They hired him to, um, interview some municipalities. He was with them, I had an interview with him yesterday, it was fantastic. Um, I think I brought a, a very different perspective, um, to, um, to that project. And just based on my initial discussion and the interview questions that we totally talked for about an hour plus yesterday, I really got a feeling that they'll be, um, they're going to fund six pilot projects in the state. And I really got a good feeling that Camden will be. And I really got a good feeling that Camden will be one of them.
Thank you.
So, that's, you know, a lot of activity there and I think it's really paying off how, you know, proactive we've been in that space as a town, so.
I would also add, Audrey, tomorrow I'm taking part in a Zoom workshop on grant funding for a resiliency plan and that's putting, being put on by the Casco Bay Estuary Project. And I'm quite excited about that once it's out.
All right. Roll on, Audrey.
So, on to EMS. So, a bit of background, again, probably redundant for everyone, but in partnership with Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center, we're kind of working as a group to try and understand what our options might be for the provision of EMS services within our communities. And, you know, just getting a better sense of what the public's understanding is of EMS as it's delivered currently and trying to feel out what their desired level of service is in our community and figuring out options for how we can, you know, match these things, you know, these expectations with different opportunities or models that might be something that makes sense for us and our partnering communities as well as the hospital because our fates are all pretty intertwined with our current system of providing EMS and what the hospital needs in terms of transfers of patients. So, currently, in order to do this work and get a better handle on all of these things, in partnership with Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center, we've engaged a consulting team. And the principal of this is Kevin McInnis. And he's an expert in designing, managing and analyzing EMS systems. He was the former CEO of Northeast Mobile Health Services. He's assembled a team around him because he was concerned about, you know, sort of any potential appearances of conflict of interest, given that that was his background. So, he's working with a academic who's based out of California as well as a, the CEO of North Star Ambulance Service who works out of Western Maine. And they're sort of helping with the process. So, to date, Mr. McInnis is collecting a lot of data. So, he's getting data from Northeast, which is going to be reviewed by Mr. Senical from Northeast, sorry, North Star Ambulance. And, you know, they're going to analyze that data and also they're getting, you know, data from Maine EMS and they're also collecting names of people within our communities and the hospitals. So, sort of anyone in Knox County and the hospital system that might have an understanding or expertise in anything that, you know, is relevant to figuring out what our options might be going forward for EMS. And he's going to start interviews to try to, you know, get more of the qualitative data on, you know, options for moving forward. And that's kind of where he is to date, but there's going to be a lot of work on that project and other updates. Mark or Taylor, would either of you like to add to any of that?
Yeah, I will quickly. That was a pretty good summary. We talked about it a bit this summer already. The, I think it's exciting to me to be within the process of the interviews, which I think will be, you know, the way to start off, talking to people that are involved in EMS in the community, political leaders, EMS leaders, and as well as business owners and residents and understanding, hearing from them what their understanding of our current EMS system is and what their expectations might be for what they see our resiliency as a whole. And the idea is that this is done by the end of the year so that the decision makers in our communities, ourselves included obviously, can be more well-informed along with the public and what we're currently looking at, what some issues might be needing to address so we can make a sound decision moving forward about our comfort level and what we might need to do to make changes in EMS and be well-informed along the way. So, again, I'm very excited to put that process at the beginning.
Great.
Let me just add, this is not something that you need to Rockport Camden, having a local landing here, going on all the state, all over, we reach all over the country. And I want to thank Chief Harley has been really good at researching what's going on in the rest of the state, sending us updates. Though that Taylor and I get updates from him quite frequently about what's going on in the rest of the state. So, I think we're being very proactive about this and ahead of the curve, which is where we need to be because this is a serious situation. So, we spent a lot of time on this and it's really good that we need to take care of citizens.
Great. Onward.
All right. Oh, and sorry, the chief's on. Do you have any other comments?
I think he's working. There he is.
No, I think you guys will sum it up. If you have folks in the working on this, can you ask the EMS worker?
Thanks, Grace. I think he was over. I couldn't quite hear it. Onto broadband.
Broadband. So, this one's, you know, pretty recently, you all took action around it, so this is more for public knowledge. But as you all know, there's the working group that's comprised of Camden and Rockport Town Staff, elected officials and citizens with knowledge and expertise in broadband. And they're, you know, looking at possible solutions for bringing faster and more affordable fiber to the premise, to the residents of our communities. And we've entered into a consulting agreement with Mission Broadband and they're going to prepare sort of high-level engineering work for a fiber-to-the-premise network and also prepare an RFP to find some sort of partner or model for how we can expand broadband within our, or fiber-to-the-premise broadband networks within our communities. Anybody want to add to that?
I think, Audrey, just to add, I think the F T T P, the, or to, I'm gonna say, I think we're scale that actual fiber to the pole. With so many private right-of-ways in town, that poles are not necessarily pound poles or the town right-of-way. So, I just wanted to share that with you, that it appears that this Mission Broadband will be fiber to the pole in town right-of-way.
Thanks, Jeremy. And the last one, renewable energy and conservation. So, this is a great opportunity to give you the update, that the LED streetlight conversion, the installation across town of new LED streetlights is complete. And within the next couple of weeks, we'll assume control of the smart control system. So, we've had probably about 20 people contact us about requests around the brightness of lights or the duration of when they're on, that sort of thing. So, we'll be able to, you know, use that system to make those sorts of adjustments within the next couple of weeks or so. So, I'm really happy that project is coming to a close. It's been, no, it's been great. Of all the stuff that we've done, it's been pretty smooth sailing. In terms of, you know, the renewable energy discussion around solar, we're hoping that there'll be two, two solar firms working on proposals for net energy tariff billing credits. Also, another opportunity has arisen with Knox County Airport. So, they received, I think, about $17 million in CARES Act funding. And as part of that funding that they've received, they want to install a solar array at the airport. And the idea behind that is because it's county-owned, they would give municipalities within the county the opportunity to buy in to that array since it doesn't need to be financed because they're using grant funds to buy the solar equipment outright. It's very likely that the terms around the municipalities investing in that array or purchasing power from that array would be much more favorable than, you know, agreements that we would have with, you know, an installer where we're paying for a portion of the cost of financing that. The drawback to all of this, though, is that any sort of, you know, firm that we're looking at a net energy tariff billing credit type project with, most of them have interconnection agreements with CMP already to do their project. And that's a huge barrier to a lot of these projects moving forward in a timely manner. Whereas because Knox County just started their project, it's very unlikely that they're going to have this interconnection agreement in place. So, for us, it's really a matter of timing as well as money and how quickly do we want to move forward? Because I know we've been analyzing this for a long time and folks are eager to have some forward progress on this. In regards to energy conservation, Siemens is in the process of completing the investment-grade audit of all town buildings as part of their performance contract. And once we receive the findings of the I G A, we'll be able to come back with those findings and talk about certain projects the board may wish to move forward with and, you know, just determining what the financing is going to be around those. Kind of similar to what we did with the LED streetlight conversion project. Anything I'm missing to anyone who's been involved in those?
Just the, I just think, well, just to clarify to the public that town buildings are in the course of Public Safety, Town Hall, Opera House, Public Works, Snowball.
Wastewater.
Wastewater. But in addition to that, Siemens is looking in parallel. We'll in there, including report the library. And most recently, they did have a discussion, we introduced them to the school system, which is in fairly good shape, but they're going to have conversations there also, which won't involve us, of course. But they've expanded across the whole town.
Yes.
Good. That's it.
I'd just like to add a couple of things. The Energy Committee had a meeting yet, which I was not able to attend. But one of the things they discussed is the Watershed School just finished their report. They've been helping us with the global government makers for the last bunch of years. And I'd like to especially thank Janet McMahon, the teachers doing that, is moving on from Watershed, she's retiring from teaching after all these years. And I'd like to thank her personally for all the help she's given the town and giving her student classes, who were helping each quarter more than they've put up. We can talk more about that in the future. But what's happened in these last three, four years since Audrey came to town, Jeremy came to town, the little turnaround this town, it was done. Thanks so much to Jeremy and Audrey in terms of being so energy-conscious and efficient and working towards all of these things. Everything they just talked about, the restoration plan, change resiliency, the broadband, the renewable energy, energy conservation, is just a total turnaround from where we were. We're at a very progressive town now, pursuing this and will continue. And I'd like to personally thank Audrey and Jeremy for all of that help and so a lot of hard work behind the scenes, you know, it means very often, but they've done an incredible job doing that. And I got to thank Bob as well for jumping into Siemens and working and finding that and working with the, what's going to happen with all our town buildings and stuff. Three, four years ago, we didn't have a plan for moving forward and now we're moving forward in so many different ways. It's really rewarding and heartwarming to see, you know, where we are as a town. So, thanks to all of you for that and the rest of the Select Board for supporting it.
Great. Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. But that's a great segue into your Select Board reports. Do you have any?
Select Board reports? Gee, I always have something. By the way, I said that the Energy Committee is now meeting again and soon. And they've always done such good work and been a champion for where we are in a lot of these efforts. The downtown design team has been talking about the wall at the, at the mechanical parking lot. They have a design, they have finished fundraising, they have personal funds fundraising, so it will not cost the town any money to get it done whatsoever. And they've also met, and part of this was that Allison and me, is to recognize that what they're starting with is not, you know, we're not going to start and finish this ongoing project and we have a wall there that we can do amazing things with. And so, you know, we'll pay attention in the future after we get this first design. We'll see where we can take it from there. And lastly, the Opera House has been incredibly busy. David Morrison, the staff, oh darn it, Holly just signed off, which is too bad. The Opera House has been doing incredible things. In COVID, they're restricted to what they can do, but they can. Shows now at the Opera House, in the Opera House, 45 seats allowed, that allows you to allow 50 people, that allows five people for staff and lights and whatever that. And the first show, a week ago, they had a sold-out show this past Friday night. They had two sold-out shows, Friday and Saturday next week. And they also had their first sold-out show at the, at the Snowball, which we're experimenting and choosing because we do safe shows. And I want to share a screen picture of a shot from this weekend, from Sunday. Let me do that. This is a shot from Sunday the way, Holly Anderson was a champion, working it out. They had two sides and spread everything out so people could sit. I think this is before everybody was there. They cleared everything out, made it safe. There were two grids on each side, each side had a separate entrance. They had 100 people, it was sold out this weekend. Here's another shot from, reduce this one, now I get to my next picture. Hold on. That doesn't work. Here's a picture from the stage. Band is on the stage and works and he'll say, it's a really nice sort of natural amphitheater if it goes up. It worked really well and everybody had a great day, had a great test and it worked really, really well. So, that's what's been doing that. Three sold-out shows right now coming up at the Opera House. And this is our first experiment at the Snowball and went great. Especially like to think Holly, she was really the champion in working out all the details. So, the Opera House people have been working hard to provide entertainment in a very difficult time.
It is that.
And that's it for me.
What?
Can I just mention something since Mark mentioned entertainment really quick? Can I just?
I'd like to finish the Select Board reports first to go back to you, Jeremy. Allison?
Yeah, I, I think the main thing is that Bob and I went to one of the Lord's Locks in the afternoon on, I think it was yesterday. And this you'll be hearing more about, and I don't want to take up too much time right now, but it's, our contact with the Maine is coming up. That's the incinerator, the waste energy plant where we currently send our trash in Portland. Maine is facing a disposal capacity crisis of sorts right now because two big plants are faltering, both for financial reasons. But it is going to be a challenging time for us to figure out what the most environmentally and basically responsible thing to do with our trash for the next few years is. But we're working on that. And the only other thing I wanted to mention briefly is that I am seeing so many cars parked, as I often do, on sidewalks. And I promised that I would bring it up, that perhaps we could have, rather than just the complaint-based system on that issue where if you call the police department, they will deal with it, it would be nice if we could get the police department to be a little bit more proactive there. It's been a long time, pet peeve of Riverside Bell, that if you're back at sidewalks, first of all, to park on them. I think a lot of the time people think that they're doing this service, they're doing it to be considerate to park half on the sidewalk because they're trying to stay out of the road. But really what it does is if you see people, it's forcing pedestrians out into the road to go around the car. That is my last comment.
Good. That's a good point, Allison. Thank you. Taylor, anything?
Yeah, just quickly, I want to recognize one of our on-call firefighters who left yesterday for basic training in the U S Air Force. John, he's really incredibly romantic. Then a call firefighter with, with campus fire department since he was a freshman in high school, which was only in 2016. He's been very dedicated and really such a great example for what dedication means. And we wish him well in his new endeavors and hope that at some point, when life changes, he returns back to our community to, to come back and be serving. We wish him luck and very thankful for the time he's spent serving the town. thankful for the time he's spent serving the town.
Thanks, thank you very much. Jenna?
I'm all set, I actually have a really interesting meeting tomorrow, and I look forward to sharing some of it in the next meeting.
Perfect, and I think for me, a lot of the stuff you covered, I would have covered, so we're done there. Jeremy, you had one comment?
Yeah, one thing, Mark was talking about entertainment, in these challenging times, the town is sponsoring the Maine Outdoor Film Festival, which is at the Camden Public Library's Amphitheater on February 8th. We're doing that in cooperation with Sender's Engineering, Stockton Engineering, he's helping us sponsor that. Nick Calanan, a local Camden guy, is putting this on, he's done this before at the Snowball, we're limiting this to 50 volts at the amphitheater, and last I knew, there were still a few tickets left, so they'll be available at the Maine Outdoor Film Festival, their website, and they're on Eventbrite, the proceeds, all the proceeds go to the Camden Public Library.
Perfect.
So just sharing that with everyone.
That's great.
At Senical.
It's a great venue, thank you very much, and with that, one more.
I've got, so sorry.
It's all right.
I know everyone's sick of hearing me talk.
No.
Just a couple other things. So the wastewater treatment plant, the engineering is essentially complete on that, and so that project is going to be ready to go out to bid by early September, so I just, this is sort of the opportunity, if the select board would like sort of an overview before that happens.
Yes.
I'd like to just put that out there.
Yes, I think we have to do that.
Allison's raising her hand.
Allison? Allison?
What, do you mean like there's second, is our opportunity going?
No.
No, 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 she's just put it on her agenda.
Yeah.
Nice try, Allison, but no.
Because I feel really strongly that I'm actually like kind of frustrated and alarmed to hear that, because we've had these meetings, that there are some overlap with the pathways goals that we have, we've had meetings where we were, the result was supposed to be that we were going to get a response back as to possibilities for like moving fences and things like that, go out a little bit more public access, and so I definitely would like to get an update on that.
Great, all right, agreed, agreed.
Can I, can I add, Bob, that this is going to the planning board on September 3rd, I believe?
Day before the select board? Doesn't make, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense.
Let me just double check.
Yeah, I don't think that's, well, it might be, but.
It's September 3rd, Thursday, September 3rd.
Okay, then our first meeting is September 8th.
Fourth.
Fourth is a Friday.
Sorry.
September 8th is our first.
September 1st.
First.
Oh, that's our first meeting, thank you, so we'll be meeting before that, all right.
I just wanted to remind everyone that that is going to the planning board on 3rd.
All right, all right.
That's frustrating, okay, no.
So, okay, well, we could.
I remember next year, Taylor.
Set up a workshop.
I think we should set up a workshop, because I agree with Allison in fairness, they, we did have a discussion, we walked the place, and I know there was a lot of discussion about safety, but they did promise to come back with, okay, we looked at this, and this is why it works or doesn't work, this, these don't, I think we have to have that.
So do we want to set it up now, or do we want to do it via email?
No, I think we should set up a workshop to go over it, probably in the next week or two.
Okay.
And we can pick a date now if you want, but I think we should probably pick a, why don't we get a, we should have the engineer there, and they probably don't have an open schedule, so.
Let's.
Wait a minute, Jeremy, let me finish, please. Why don't we get a couple of dates from the engineer that might work in the next week or two, for, you know, some kind of an afternoon meeting, perhaps times, it might work, we can bounce it up to the select board for dates.
Yep.
Back to you, Jeremy.
Just thinking about efficiency and cost effectiveness, he will be up on September 3rd for the planning board here. I also wanted to mention, remember that the site plan amendments were approved by voters this year? If the planning board approves this project, and there's changes that you want later when it comes to fencing and things like that, technically it can be approved by staff and does not have to go back to the planning board, just sharing that.
All right, thank you.
All right, so just a couple more things, so all of you know that the mechanic in Washington Street parking lots, they're finished with the exception of trees that will be planted, so there's going to be five trees planted along the retaining wall, as well as the garden club is going to do some planting of flowers or plants in the planer boxes on the walls, and there's some railing that needs to go up. For those of you who don't know, we received an additional Keep Me Healthy grant, it's an additional $23,000, so we'll talk a little bit more about, you know, a status update of all that, and, you know, some of the, you know, ongoing work we're going to do with COVID prevention and education and awareness raising. The Snowball culvert replacement project is scheduled to start next week. As far as we know, that's going to move forward as scheduled, but sometimes there are changes, and we'll let you know if we hear about anything. Norwood Avenue, there's going to be a fairly significant project there, and that's begun, so the first part of that is really the water companies work on that road, and they're doing that work currently.
Great.
And that's really the big stuff for town projects.
A lot of information, great, great information for the public, especially, we, some of us know a lot of these things, but we don't get it out, and I think it's a great mechanism. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the select board this evening.
Certainly.
We'll call vote, Allison. Yeah, she said yes. Jenna, Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you all, very productive and deep meeting, thanks so much, see you soon.